I think if that would be impossible, then yeah.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll tell my husband what he's doing. I mean, I'll ask him.
Hi Kelly.
I guess by the way decorating. You know, they just started from the beginning.
Well, Kelly, you can get a discount on the hay bales because we did that one time.
Straw bales, yeah.
And you can discount the...
You do. They cannot be wet.
That's right.
If you're looking for a water fight, we'll probably have it up to somebody else's vehicle. Oh, no, my husband doesn't own his truck, Boston.
Oh, then maybe, okay. Then we won't do that. We have to put no water.
No, we can do the truck. Well, we...
I don't think the Astro can be.
Wear the dog.
I think we'll be able to take it to bed.
I also have a trailer.
I don't know.
So I can use a truck and trailer.
Well, he's got a truck and trailer. And he's okay if he gets wet.
Oh, yeah, in fact, it would be the first time it'd be clean.
That'd be great.
Forget the water.
Well, I, how was your straw bales? They're not expensive.
You can ride them.
No, you want to water.
Well, you can ride them in the truck.
Yeah, you won't get wet.
Well, or you just don't return the straw bales, but they're not, they're probably ten or twelve bucks a piece.
Oh, okay.
And they're not crazy expensive.
But we will take water.
No, no, no.
We will take water.
Water sign, not even give us the water.
Or can I do my...
Well, it's not like I said it's a truck.
No, that's true. But it's, okay, I'm...
I don't know.
We can drink water if you want. So, so, so we're good?
We'll use our truck.
You're checking your truck. Okay, cool. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I do need a, kind of like a bio from you guys of something that you want us to say
Oh, in the status.
as you're coming up the freeway, you know, we'll say...
Meet, meet the...
There's the... Here's the two million us to throw at.
Well, tomatoes are here, cucumbers are over here. Please, choose your questions wisely.
Don't talk to nobody. Don't give your story.
So I just need somebody to make me have a bio.
I'll, I'll, I'll do that. Would you need that bio?
Yes, please.
Oh, good.
No, I just need it by the twentieth of June.
What do you need in the bio, by the way?
Just who you are and what you do and, and what your role is about.
It just, it just happens.
I don't think she needs a bio from each of us.
No, no, I'll, I'll just write it. Yeah, I'll write it.
Okay, no, I just need to...
That's a good question, man.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll write it and then I'll, I'll just burst it once you guys...
Don't do it, just send it to me.
Yeah. There you go, it's two weeks, though.
Yeah, no, we're excited. I mean, when we were talking and discussing, you know, whatever, it was like, but they're pretty incredible people and with all this best stuff going on and with all the, I mean, people have no idea what you do.
We're gonna make the trailer do a best in, where there's... Yeah. Water damage. Shoot leaves.
Yeah. You could have dry ice. So when the water hits the dry ice...
Oh, my God. Batteries out.
Little T cell batteries.
This is going off real quick. So that said, as I mentioned, I'm just gonna keep the, the sun, the temperature setting.
Yeah, okay.
Great.
How's... Oh, um, the Grand Valley on the third road north. We saw the telephone poles, they're all neatly chopped down, you know? About four of them. We didn't make anything about it, then we saw the crews come in for two days working it. Then I got a thing on the, on the fence. It said, "It's all done, make sure your phones are being hung up." I said, "I think we're gonna call in for a report from my phone, maybe." So in the meeting this morning, we collaborated this meeting, my neighbor, she said, she called the number, because she has a number here. And then he said that the reason why they had to work on those is because somebody came along and cut those poles down. Then they stole all the wires.
Wow.
Oh, wow. The telephone wires.
Yeah, wow.
Yeah, because there'll still be old ones, I think, the copper.
Yeah, the copper wires. But that's, they cut down and hid four holes.
Four, yes. I looked at that and I said, "Boy, all I need to do is logs are ready to be..."
They cut one down on Soladad, too.
Oh, they did, Soladad, huh?
That's super in.
Well, that probably, like, was, I think it was Joshua Avenue, that's where they cut it down.
Okay, and then, um...
I don't know of any telephone poles without electrical wires on it. Mostly they're on the same thing. Were they Edison poles or were they...
No, they were not normal telephone poles, but now they have skinny poles, like I said, because they are, and the wires are very high now.
Okay.
So, and then, then I had signed up for the meeting on June seventh for the pure water of the Los Angeles program. I was one of the kind of pure water they planned to give Los Angeles, and I don't think we're involved, I was just gonna listen. And on June twelfth, I registered for the live discussion of wildfire safety for, with Southern California Edison. They want to minimize the need for PSPs, they said, in support of their...
So I thought, oh, this is, this is what they have to say also.
Thank you for that. All right. Tammy, you're on.
Yeah, continue cleaning trash. I will say, we had a huge illegal dump of trucks were coming out the freeway, coming off the 14 freeway onto Escondido.
No, off that, we were doing with the fence gap.
Because they were not getting off on the off-ramp.
Yeah, no, the fence gap.
They were reaching, yeah. There's a truck full out right there. Yeah, we were reaching that, coming down, going up, dumping concrete, just basically making a U-turn and getting right back on the freeway or continuing forward and getting on Escondido. Um, I did get a whole, Valdadera office actually helped. And they got Caltrans out there to clean it all up. There was roofing material, there was concrete, there were, um, like, construction debris, um, like cabinets and all kinds of stuff. There was probably eight different piles. And Caltrans did go out and cleaned it all up. I said, "Well, this is great, but you guys need to put a fence in."
They didn't put that debris up of Escondido to look like they blocked it?
Well, they, they put a little dirt mound there, but I've already seen where there's tires over that dirt mound.
But they got, yeah, they're big rocks, uh, cement.
Oh, no, 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 that's on Escondido.
Right.
Yeah, and we cleaned that up. Actually, um, we got, with Waste Management, Catherine Barber's office, we got roll-offs and we went and cleaned that up with a, with a tractor and some other guys. So this is actually, it's, well, the 6700 Escondido is where they're doing the dumping, but they're coming off the freeway just over a little dirt mound and coming down, they're breaching the freeway, coming down onto a dirt lot. Anyway, I did ask Caltrans, like, "Okay, this is great, you guys cleaned it up, but you need to put a fence up because it's gonna keep happening." And the response I got from them was kind of like, "Oh, well, we'll look into that, we're not sure that that's our jurisdiction." And I was like, "No, it's a freeway."
Yeah. No, you have to be sure, you know, nobody can touch anything except for the, only them.
Exactly. So, so gotten that all cleaned up. So hopefully, I'm still working with, um, Valdara, um, McHale, was it McHale?
Yeah, McHale, uh, uh, not Tommy McHale, but yeah.
Sarah, no. Anyways, her last name.
She's been great. She's great.
So, she was awesome. She reached out to me and said, "Hey, I can help with that." And I'm like, "What?" And I'm like, "Yeah, yeah, whatever." And it was like two days, I got a phone call, "They're cleaning it up." I'm like, "Who's cleaning it up?"
You sure there are more there?
Yeah. So anyway, so then, and then, so they were great with that. Now Barber's office actually got us the help with Waste Management to clean up the one-off Escondido.
Tony McHale.
Yes, Tony. Um, and so, the, all the rocks you see on Escondido, the homeowner, the property owner paid for those rocks to put those up, because that's his property.
Yeah.
And so, he, he put those rocks up to keep the trucks from driving in and driving out. Um, and we are going out tomorrow to pick up, well, we always do all the schools at the end of the school year for graduations, so we always make sure the middle school, the high school, and the elementary school are all completely cleaned up in and around all of it. But then we've got, the couch had to be picked up, and I, I got a message from them, they already picked it up. They got the couch and the wood. That was randomly thrown in two different places. Um, and then we'll clean up, like downtown Acton tomorrow. Well, and then there's a couple more barely over the side dumps on Soladad, just past, uh, Posa Russell Ranch. Um, there's, we think it's a car part, um, where they steal car parts and they hack them and they...
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, they, yeah, chop shop. Um, because there's like BMW doors, there's, um, wheels, tires, random, like, a lot of batteries.
Oh, that's bad.
Yeah.
They have to get rid of that right there.
They're acting on batteries.
Yeah, yeah, those little ones are horrible, but the big ones are okay. Um, but anyway, but so many car parts, but like fenders, um, door handles, um, consoles that are consoles, but they're all higher-end cars. They're BMWs, Mercedes, Lexus, it's all those kind of things. So anyway, it continues.
Share us a firm, if I want to fingerprint some of that.
Called.
Oh, okay.
They've called. I've let them know. They're like, "Okay, you guys pick them up, thank you." So anyway, so we're gonna go get those.
You're ready?
What?
Anything that dispense?
You're cutting out.
Uh, we can't hear you, Deputy Martinez.
That's weird. But anyways, we're gonna block tomorrow and clean up that other stuff, so, um... But the county's been good about helping us. Waste Management has been great about helping us. Um, like I said, Valdadera's office openly stepped up. Yeah.
That's unbelievable.
She's good on that.
I was, like I said, two days.
Gums back.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, did you know that, um, she's going, her, she and her group are gonna come to speak to us seniors on Wednesday?
We are.
We know nothing about this stuff going on, so I thought maybe, and then we may...
We can enlighten you.
She said she has pictures.
Oh, I do. I have photos.
And this is what we're gonna eat, probably, and I think all the pictures she's gonna be showing you.
No, we don't show any photographic tomorrow. We've got some graphic photos, but we won't record.
Oh, thank you, though.
Yeah.
For doing that.
What time, what time are we?
Uh, one, one PM.
At the?
Apodossi Winery.
Okay, one PM at the Apodossi Winery.
Right.
Uh, industrial says that we fill traffic safety meetings in once a week. I should be a lot of... All right.
So we have some, a couple of things on business unfinished, or old business to rehab. So, uh, we need to move it, I, I, all I can do is call.
I forget about the license. I just sent the gigantic document to the agency. I had, um, our front chat, we need to do a deep research on every ordinance and everything to do with residential detox facilities, both state and county ordinances. And then tell me all of the various things we can do. And it listed the things that they cited, like drug use onsite, trespassing abuses, and, um, and over, you know, to... And so it's about, kind of stuff, including phone numbers, you know, addresses, forms. So, I said, so we can see if that...
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, so he's a Kevin.
Well, I don't know.
He's like, he wrote your first invoice as new chat.
Well, we'll see. You know, the thing with it is, uh, if he can give you pictures, you know, actually, it's took like three minutes. So we'll see.
Thank you.
We'll see. Well, don't let me get, yeah, who knows?
Well, they answer right here.
And whatever it sounds weird, get up.
However, trust me, whatever. Well, the, um, the first thing on there was, uh, about where you could, like, make a place, which is, that was like, perfect position for one. So like, that's a great place to start, at least to get things.
So I, I don't know that we can do anything for that. I mean, did you vote? I don't think we can.
I don't know. We talked, it doesn't...
All right, okay. And then, it's hard.
No, go ahead.
The other thing is the parade.
Yes.
Which is very exciting.
Yes.
Will everyone be here on the Fourth of July?
Yes.
I'll be here.
Yes, yes, okay. So, that's, we need to figure out, so if we do the Mustang, what's our next?
I've got a, um, I'm shooting a picture, so here's the truck.
What I'm thinking is, you said there was a truck.
How, how many people are gonna be here?
All of us.
All of us are gonna be here.
Not a lot, I don't know.
Unless we're gonna do one of those challenges. We can do, um, uh, in our, you know, in our... I've got a, um...
Flatbed?
Well, let's talk about the other. Let me find my picture of the Mustang.
Tammy, you said the truck.
I, I have, we have a truck and a trailer. We can put, you know, straw bales on it.
Yeah.
You can sit on that, you can decorate it however you want. Do that, um, okay, which is totally available.
With the, um, red, red convertible Mustang.
Oh, wow.
And so with the top down.
No, why?
Two people, two people, what, we'd have one person driving, you know? My husband, my celebrity wife, daughter, our child.
Are you losing it going?
Um, and then two people could sit up on the boot in the back, but then a couple people would have to walk, which I can walk.
Well, I have a Jeep, make a big top off Jeep.
Right. I kinda like having a water fight, though. Or the Jeep.
Oh, the Jeep, fine.
Well, we have a Model A, I guess it could be called a R. It's like, well, the theme is community, connect, community and unity. Best isn't allowed anywhere, except for M4. No, it's not allowed anywhere, and not through similarity determination, the code says that straight up. So I, you...
No, I just said, I said, if they were gonna try to change the zoning to put the best in there, would it not require a CUP? If they were gonna have to do a zone, if they were gonna try to do a zone change? And he said, "Yes, that would require a CUP."
But under what, what section of code? I, I don't...
I, I didn't dig that deep.
That, well, that's just wrong. I mean, it's completely wrong, because it's not allowed use anywhere.
Right.
Except on M3, I guess, and M4, and, and three.
We don't even have M4, though, right?
No, no.
Well, M, no, I, I'm an M3, I didn't, if I say M4. Well, we don't have M3 either in our, you know, analog, we're only allowed M, like industrial M1, definitely.
Under the AV plan, that's what it says.
Yeah.
So...
Yeah, they're trying to shoe-worn, square peg into a round hole, definitely that's...
So even these, what I'm saying is, even if they zone change to M1, and that's what concerns me, Sam Day saying they can get a CUP, that's wrong. You're not, because...
See, he's not saying they can get a CUP. He says a zone change, I said, would a zone change require a CUP? And yes, a zone change requires a CUP. It didn't necessarily talk about if they were changing to M1 or M1 and a half, or, I didn't specify, I just said...
I've never heard of you having a CUP to do zone, you just do a zone change in that department, general, I don't know, but I've never...
Anyway.
They don't...
Okay, I, I spoke very general, and I think he answered me very general, so I'm not for that.
Very size of the answer, okay. Uh, there were no applications filed in the area according to him, and, um, so, and I asked if there was any kind of a temporary moratorium that the county was considering on best projects until the best site ordinance is adopted. And he said, "Not due until..." So, um, the Compass Energy Project, which is in San Juan Capistrano, had an in-person slash Zoom meeting the other day. Um, it started at, it was part of their CDC, often through the whole process that they're in. San Juan Capistrano, the local government was not in favor of this project, and it looked like they were going to be denied, so the developer, NG, they, they pulled their application and ran the CDC. So now they're in that process, and this public meeting, um, was scheduled for, from 10 AM to 9 PM, so it was a long day. It was scheduled like an auditorium. Um, they had a steady stream of commenters. Everybody was only allowed two minutes, and there was no lapse, there was no downtime.
Nope.
And it was one person after the other out of the project. So it was very impressive. Uh, there was only a handful of people that got to speak in favor. Um, one gentleman got up, uh, he's kind of just a paid mount fee, and he was speaking, uh, reading something from Scott Burnshaw from CSE.
Oh, my goodness.
So that was a good chuckle, and I think the audience was ready to get up and scramble that man.
Let me finish.
You know, but, um, you know, that, that was ridiculous. But there's another, um, second meeting that's gonna be online only, and that's gonna be on Wednesday, June 3rd, so...
Wait, that's...
Tomorrow.
Wait, you mean, is it Wednesday or June 3rd? Tomorrow's June 3rd.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, tomorrow, June 3rd. So June 3rd is the second, I, I lost a day, I was...
Oh, so wait, so can we, we can decide soon, so one can participate?
It's soon, yes. And, um, I can...
Can you send something to Tammy? What time is it, so I can...
Uh, I don't really get it, because I participated in the other one.
Okay.
So, yeah, I called in and, um, just to speak. But, um, the, even people that are, like, really into batteries and all that, this, again, it's the wrong location. It's the wrong project for this location. It's an area environmentally sensitive area, and, um, it's Saddleback Church property. And Saddleback Church, once again, had no idea that that's what this project was.
They still want it?
No, they don't want it. But they didn't realize what they, they...
Did they sold the property over there?
Yeah. And they didn't realize what they had, they didn't realize what this project was going to be. They just thought, "Oh," you know? Batteries, and they didn't realize it was dangerous. And that the community was gonna be so against it, and somehow everybody really bad. But anyway, so we'll see how that shapes out. So basically, that's what I have, and, um...
Can I ask you a question? How, how many properties are involved with, are they trying to purchase here and after the...
With the Angelino, or for all of them?
Yeah, how, how many properties are involved?
Angelino, there's six properties that they have, that needs on. Sixty-eight acres, and it spans over a mile. And they're all A1 or A2. And then there are supposedly, this is semi-heresy, there's a lady that was approached in October at the end of Kentucky Springs Road, it's forty acres. They wanted to lease, I think, five acres from her, or fifteen acres or something. Anyway, she said, "No, absolutely not." Then they came back, like, two months ago, and they said, "Well, your neighbor on this side and your neighbor on that side, who are also forty acre parcels," said, "Yes." So she found herself thinking, "Well, I'm gonna be right in the middle of industrial heaven." So she capitulated, and she said, "Okay." And of course, they weighed a million dollars in her direction, who said, "A million dollars a year." And this is, like I say, I didn't hear it from her specifically, because I think she reached out to me when she told me she had rebuffed their, um, approach back in October, and I tried reaching out to this person again, and, um, she didn't respond to my email. So she's probably feeling like, "I don't wanna be lecturer." I'm not gonna lecture her. How could you turn down a million dollars a year?
That's right, yeah.
Right? You can go buy another piece of property somewhere else, you know, with the first down payment. So I don't blame you. These are life-changing amounts of money. These developers are waving around this money, and they're just bulldozing their way through Acton. It's really horrible.
That's why, that's why Barber's motion is so important in over that situation. I feel like it's essential to the survival of this community.
Yeah. There's another parcel, one hundred and fifty-three acres, kind of a L shape, and it's right, um, if you look at the Hubidor property here, it's just to the east. There's a house at the north tip of Hubidor, and there's a house at the south tip of Hubidor, on the east border of it. And this property runs right, it butts right up to the one at the bottom, and it actually kind of joins to the one at the top. So I think that guy at the top is involved with the sale of this property, like the family trust or something. And it, and that was sold to a energy project developer. I looked at the fellow's name and on LinkedIn, he's, he's a wind and battery project developer.
Oh, and there's three parcels, too.
Thank you.
Thank you, projects.
Thank you, projects, three projects.
Yes, well, one we think is out of the Cal ISO Q as being, now it's no longer active.
Yeah, except for Derek, still moving forward with it, maybe.
Just for the...
Fleeter.
Yes.
That's the problem. I think Fleeter is actually over in the substation, but I, I know it's gonna be late, so let's just, yeah, yeah. But the one on the other side, Mati, that's in, in Henry's building, so... It's a lot, it's a lot.
Yeah. Still a little bit.
We definitely have to come out of this, are you?
Yeah.
I, I, can I ask you, we can put directions?
No, no, I was just, I was just, sorry, sorry. So there were two, uh, visiting units, we, we now...
I'm jingling some, yeah.
Okay, so, well, um...
The last meeting, yes, and I'll have the, uh, I, I haven't finished the last, and I'll be back.
Okay, so, good. All right, please, your community reports, uh, education, I think, contract, yeah. Okay, planning, wording? Okay, this is the, uh, by its way of means, it was on here, um, so, we can send it for... Okay, here's a little space. Utilities, we can...
Yeah, except for, I, we need to come up with some days in time to get back to Senator Valderrama, who's been white-sized.
Right.
So should we do that now? Because it's about until September.
Yeah, that works. Yeah, did they give us any?
Yeah, just asked us to give them, they give it to us over the next few weeks.
So not only time that I can put the, unveil the, uh, like, the fifteenth through nineteenth, that's not...
June fifteenth and nineteenth. So, so, uh, so, okay.
As you were saying, other than that, I would say pretty much any afternoon, early, early work.
I don't have a problem with that, it's a...
No, I, I don't like to be a person, I want to be, okay.
So June fifteenth to nineteenth, not good, but almost any other time.
Yeah, so, like, next week, uh, no, the nights for me, uh, pretty much any afternoon, early, 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 uh, nights.
So it's, you know, so I'm gonna say, so, so next week, okay, so nine is good, ten is good, twelve is good. Twelve is bad for me, sun's wrecking.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, um, yeah, so that's good, but then the next weekend, you said, is bad for you. No, okay, the whole week, and then how about the twenty-fourth?
Afternoon's good, twenty-fourth, I think, is good, twenty-sixth, I think, mostly.
Okay, I'm taking, God, I'm on the next week.
Change day, okay.
Okay, maybe this week is tomorrow. So, Dodd's things true for you, or?
Uh, twenty-third, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth is wide open.
Okay.
The two stars.
The ninth, twelfth, thirteenth.
Ninth, and I'm just saying the rules.
Uh, the, the tenth be afternoon.
Okay, all right, these are only be afternoons.
Oh, okay.
Instead of coming out and, and, you know, test their food, saying, "Okay, it's not warm enough, we're gonna confiscate all your food." You should do that the first time. The second time, we're taking some of your equipment. And it'll be impounded, and if you wanna come down and bail it out, you can come down and bail it out.
Well, they should take all the equipment that violates the law, like the pop-ups and everything.
And the cooking, but take it and impound it, because taking the food does nothing.
They just have so many come deliver new food, the open flames.
Yeah, the cooking oil, it's not benign. They go home, they dump it on the other side of the road.
I know, I know.
It's just, it's horrible.
They've got open flame barbecues, you know, and it's just like...
And I realize that this is happening probably all over the LA area. We're not alone, and I'm sure that it's a big job for county to try to track down on it all, but they need to change their policy on it, because their policy isn't working.
Well, I think barbecue, truck buses, state...
I was gonna say, if you can convince two or board supervisor members to go along and season their equipment, we'll vote for that, too.
For a second warning, that should be like the first warning.
As I said, just call, call, you know, call some leads, call for that, and see if they listen to you.
Yeah, and they won't. They won't, because it's giving, it's giving people a way to make a living in this town.
I, I, yeah, I don't know. I don't think it's local people that are running these things up there.
No, no, it's freaking gangs.
And it's not just LA County, I was reading about, I think it was Alameda County, finding, county operators were based out of, I don't know, Modesto or something like that, and coming over, it was one of the, they was cross-county stuff, but yeah, it's, they're, they're big operations, those counties. Just a guy across the street from, um, McDowell, he's, he's got a permit, he's got a health permit. I'm trying to see what we can do about his... I'm trying to see what we can do about his, his expanded number.
His location's wrong.
I can't believe the Forest Service lets him, I mean, I know that they don't have that.
They don't have any control, he's in our right.
Right, but it's like if they dump something over-
And the reason why he's allowed to stay there is if you notice there's Big Rick's parked out there, because that's a parking area, and he's got a licensed truck with, that has a health permit, and he's not illegal. And I've sent various people to that other guy, the other taco guy, so often, words is like at the harassment stage. Because I've had deputies and road maintenance and everybody talk to him, and Don Chatos calls up, and Don Chatos calls up the Bonneville Mayor, and the Bonneville Mayor calls me up and says, can't you keep, he's, he's selling Mexican food, and Don Chatos has got Mexican- no, there's no law, the government says you can't.
No, but there's laws in putting up tents and all that other stuff. That's against, that's against county's own ordinance.
Yeah, I don't know.
In LA City is, in LA City, if you have a food truck and you plan on parking it somewhere within the city to sell food, you have to get permission for that location. And I believe that that should be happening.
I don't know. The reason that, the reason state, I believe, changed their laws is about Los Angeles because LAPD uses sees their equipment. And the state changed it so that LAPD couldn't seize their equipment. So they decriminalized vending without a license or permit.
So the one that, even if they have a license, it's, what they're doing is illegal with these tents and tables and stuff? That's against state law. So I don't know why you can't take their equipment.
Well, as I said, we could, because if it's three of the other, or two of the other ordinance-
And that's a pop-up. And, and according to the, um, the ordinance, street vendor ordinance, pop-ups are not allowed.
Wait, so the, so the board decides what the sheriff enforces?
No, the state said the sheriffs can't enforce it. They decriminalized vending without a license. The board decides what public health can do.
No, but I mean, if they have a license, but they're, they opened up a restaurant on the sidewalk and said-
It's not, it's not a kilo competition, sheriffs can't kill.
Sheriff's do misdemeanors all the time.
No, it's not a misdemeanor.
So what is it?
It's nothing, it's decriminalized. It's just a violation.
What about when certain types of vending is decriminalized?
No, I think-
So all, all street vending?
Yeah, that's why the states are all on the state now, yeah.
All right, yeah. I said, it's just, okay. So I move that we provide comments to regional planning with concerns regarding a proposed modification of PM one sixty-three, two, parcel number one sixty-three.
Yeah, a second?
No.
Two, two, seconded, any discussion? Paul Taylor?
Hi.
Post? All right, the major topic, you guys, that's.
Best, best, best. House, the, the, down, down.
Okay, um, our lawsuit is in progress. Uh, the, the lawsuit's being fought through a series of briefs and ours was posted a few weeks ago. Um, Hecky and LA County are due to submit their brief to the courts tomorrow, I believe. And, um, it's either twenty pages each or it's thirty pages combined if they decide to join together. Um, so that, that's the next step. And then we can submit a rebuttal in a couple of weeks to whatever they put out there tomorrow. The trial hearing is July seventeenth and, um, we do plan on appealing if for any reason we don't prevail, and we plan on prevailing. Um, moving on, residents are being approached to lease or purchase their property in East St. Panton. Um, some have been told that, well, your neighbors agreed to sell. So they're kind of being coerced, strong-armed, manipulated. Um, so they're pressuring residents in the same yes, because they don't want to be surrounded by batteries, if the people on both sides are already agreed to sign a lease. Um, the Angelino project representatives have, um, been on their properties that they, now they have purchased under the name of Palm Investments. Uh, most of those properties, there's only one that I can't trace to an investment group. Um, and that one is, I think, of, ends in O three, seven, and I think that's owned by an individual man. Um, but it's probably under contract with an agreement to purchase.
They told us that they would, they all of them under contract.
Yeah, well, if you look at the deeds, they are, uh, the current owners are Palm Investments. So, um, the reps have been kind of over at that property, they were drilling a few months ago and thought maybe they were doing soil studies or something. Um, the neighbor that lives there on Tortuda, he reached out to me and said, there's stuff going on on the property. And I said, well, in the midst that I find out. So I reached out to, um, Sam Day. Uh, and he assured me that there have been no applications filed as of now for any best projects tied to the Angelino area, to any of those APS I gave you. Uh, and also none, he confirmed that there were none filed in the active area in the community for any kind of a best project. Um, so there's always the possibility that there's conversation happening. He just said there was no application filed. So the developer could be in conversation with county in, in preparation with filing. Um, and the reason why we say that is because of that representative for Angelino project, the Avantis Angelino project, did tell this homeowner that we plan on probably breaking ground in twenty-twenty-seven. So they've offered this particular homeowner, um, twenty-five thousand for two years in a row, so twenty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand to hold the property and not sell it to anybody else. So for the, for the right of having, the first right of refusal to buy the property, they're going to be willing to pay that homeowner fifty thousand dollars, which even if the project doesn't go forward, they get to keep that for the deed. If the project does go forward in two years, then they offer you like six hundred thousand dollars for this property, which is in line with what that house is valued at right now, I looked at comps. But my concern is, and he has concerns, the homeowner, he has a two-point-seven-five percent loan.
Yeah.
And he's going to lose that. And then what happens if he can't afford equal or greater than what he's getting up? He's kind of being forced out because he's got the fourteen freeway out his back and a lot of batteries at his front. He's pinned in, you know, he's pinned in there.
It's, it's a very sad situation. This thing is a mile long and it leaves around holes.
Yep.
If we, if those are processed, those boards, I mean, it's two. That one's bad. And then- Well, we, but so what concerns me is if the developer's saying we're going to be breaking ground by twenty-twenty-seven.
I believe they'll be breaking ground in twenty-twenty-seven.
That means they're talking to regional planning. And regional planning is all about, there are communications with regional planning.
You may have to, um, ask for information on, in communications.
Yeah, yeah, that's-
Because if they're, if they're just waiting for the Hubidor case to be settled and then they're going to house, I mean, what about the open concentration that you were-
Well, that's why we have to keep it front and center as regional planning. Barker did us a solid with that. And yet, everybody wants us to ignore it, so regional planning doesn't know what the hell we're doing about it. They admitted that, we don't know, we're trying to figure that out. I'm like, well, okay, this is how to do it then, right? I mean, it's like-
Yeah, we definitely need to many, it would totally industrialize that area.
It's, they, they said it's a thousand megawatts, it's fourteen hundred megawatts, that Angelino project. I've read the L G I A, that's what it says.
Yeah, yeah, it's just big, it's really big. And they're probably going to use lithium iron phosphate, which is just as bad as lithium iron on, and they'll try to tell you the distance, but it's none, they aren't. And I talked to an environmental biologist last night at my son's house. Um, this man has a, a business, he used to work for Edison, and he now has his own business for the last eleven years, um, consulting, doing E I Rs and that kind of thing. A lot of staff, four locations, big, big deal. And we talked about lithium iron on and lithium iron phosphate. And I said, lithium iron phosphate aren't safe. He says, they're just more safe than lithium iron. Because they are not safe. It's coming from an environmental biologist that deals with this stuff all the time. So it was interesting. Mr. Day also confirmed that, um, because my concern was that the property for Avantis was A1 or A2, they're either, they're all either A1 or A2. And I said, would a CUP not be required for ozone change? And he says, yes, they will be required as CUP. And, um, wait, if there was ozone change required, if, if the best-
So the case for these replying is really possible. Public Works also has copies of these things, so I guess, like, it works. No, Public Works is better than regional planning.
No, I know, but I'm just like, it's bizarre to, like, imagine this right now.
I just have a question. So, um, in addition to this stuff that you're talking about, when they want to erase the driveways and stuff, um, is there such a thing as over-concentration of types of businesses? I mean, we want our businesses to succeed in our town. And we only have, you know, X amount of people, seven, eight hundred, basically. Now, a convenience store and gas station are right next door.
Three other convenience stores and gas stations?
Yes, and then across the street, you've got, you know, you've got Shell, you've got Arco, you've got Seventy-Six, and they're all the same identical types of businesses. And so now you're going to be four people, four different establishments competing for the same amount of people. And I just think that it's setting everybody up to fail, to allow like an over-concentration of the same type of business. It's like you wouldn't want three Mexican restaurants in the same shopping center in a small town. They're all, I mean, you've already got food trucks.
Oh, you said, you have the two food trucks that are-
And it's, it, that food truck is hurting Don Chatos. And I don't believe they should be allowed to park it. If they're a little food truck, fine, find another place to park it. You are, you should not be allowed to directly park in front of somebody, you're directly competing with them. Direct the same kind of food, same hours you're there, same hours they're open, it's totally not fair.
So we don't do all of it.
You know, I, I, I don't-
See, the problem, I, I-
I'm sorry.
No, no, please. The problem, I also see, on your point, is if we get four gas stations, convenience stores, two of them go out of business, now act as got two large buildings empty.
We already have a lot empty at the Seventy-Six, a lot of those buildings are already empty.
And it just degrades the town.
Over by Esso Sushi too, I think there's several, I think, seventy.
Yeah, it's very empty over there. I mean, I think it's like, we were three, I need and we sold in the pharmacy.
This place could be like directly in front of the apartments.
Oh, yes, the apartments was the second, there was a two-lot subdivision. Apartments lot was one, yep. There are other reasons why it's wrong, they're saying in this parcel out there just made me just this lot two, they've taken, stripped out the apartment complex, because they're saying, oh, they're independent, but they're not, because this project's going to need to go across the driveway. And so it's like, so they're saying, well, yeah, but the people in lot one don't have to use parcel two for their access, that's not the salient issue. The salient issue is are the people on block two going to use block one? Of course they're still connected. That's, and, and they have, there's been, I've got emails from their engineers saying, this is not right, because this is why you use this, and this is why you can do it under subdivision map.
They're sticking on the wet topic, gas station.
If you may not even do this, ma'am, I am held responsible for all the errors that, like, because the original survey they're supposed to do, you're only supposed to correct maps, like, within a few months of recording that. And it's, and he sets up very clearly, both property owners still have, the property has to be, both lots still have to be owned by the same person, and the same engineer has to do it, and that's, anyway, so it's, it, so, um, I, I don't know what the town can, I am writing my own letter on all of this stuff that I will be submitting very soon. So, um, is there anything you guys, because I, I can get, in my personal matter, I'm giving all of these, there's something the community wants to get, maybe over-concentrations for.
I think over-concentration, I think, um, the concern is that, um, the documents aren't available, um, to, you know, they shouldn't, they shouldn't be available for looking at, at doing this property. So we call, calling the question, you know, the, the processing of this, all information is, I think that's a legitimate question.
Fear of, uh, the businesses losing, and then the town being degraded by vacant businesses.
So would you dovetail that as part of the over-concentration, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah.
How about people being so concentrated there that, what do you think of the public state people, there's so many apartments have a lot of people in there, and in case of evacuation or fire, those gasoline pumps do a lot for sure.
Yeah, I, I, I kind of wonder-
What do you do, the people, human factories should be considered, I think.
Safety, by rest?
Um, and you get more traffic in, with the residents, plus the people going on the freeway.
It's concentrating traffic down by the Facebook.
Right, it's right there, so.
Well, or Crown Valley, maybe there are, Junior High School, yeah. But it's, but I, I'm sitting here going, I know that this is going to trigger a, a CUP, because I know, so, and that's, that's the crime of this thing, because we can't have a traffic signal, we're not supposed to have, so none of this should be, so it's really also inconsistent with the aviary plan, like you were saying.
Well, I wonder what-
Redditch, Redditch.
I don't like them either.
They've got several, they sound like Redditch now.
What city, you talking about?
The Roundabout.
Oh, Redditch.
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 I wonder what a proper concentration, um, of gas stations is.
We've made this argument before, I've-
Because to me, anything over that is indicative that it's for the community, it's not for the community. Now, so I don't think that was that different, say, the counties, not the county across the world, if you decide to want to see this.
But it is, but that's what aviary plan says, the aviary plan says the county is supposed to, is, is not supposed to approve developments that would increase, this answer it, increase dependency on urban infrastructure. So it's, that's exactly what, so, yeah, you said that before. And, and that's one of the snarkiest little, she's not on it anymore, plenty commission people, I was going to say person, I wasn't going to say anything else, uh, but I can still, I was seeing her face, she goes, is this, we brought this up at Starbucks? Well, I'm sure that at some point, somebody active is going to find a way to Starbucks and get a couple coffee. And I'm like, that's not what makes something community service. It's like, anyway, so, it's out.
Yeah, I mean, this gas station and convenience store, that, it, it's freeway service.
Yes, well, that's what I mean, it's like-
You're taxi commuters and-
Well, my point is, is like, you, you, one, two, maybe for this, maybe three? Okay, I think we're either out of limits of what reasonably, what's being like, you have three options for that. You have already, almost all convenience stores already, so it's not like you're offering something hobbled there. There's, there's not anything that I'm like, oh, okay, but that's, that's weird, but then the, um-
Yeah, we're looking for-
That's where any of them pass through this place, it's a little license. That I will, my dead body, we, I don't, we have too many, like, they're over, we're way over such a, and by the way, I've done, because this issue came up, when you were looking at the other gas station, remember they were going to put a gas station opposite, on Antelope Woods Road? And it's Crown Valley, right? That was going to be a sixteen, it was huge too. And I did this survey, I, I went down to, I did not just the desk level survey, but whenever I was downtown, I was making sure I was looking at, I was focused on the valley, right, because that's like a suburb, right? Every intersection I drove through, I would count how many gas stations there were, and there was never more than two at a fast lane. Nobody has three gas stations and three fast lanes, because we had subway, and we were a C U B, so four, and Jack in the Box, and the高速.
Well, subway's gone, but-
But now we have seven, seven of one.
Yeah, but at the time, it was, yeah, it was like, there's no, no intersection in all of LA County has this type of stuff. Why do we, right? Because the freeway doesn't count, so Arco's really part of the intersection, right?
So it's like- It's really setting the other businesses up for failure. And it's setting that business up for failure, because now you're splitting the incoming traffic fourways.
Or you have to, or you have to increase the traffic in that street, because I'll, I'll bet you the next thing is a giant monolith, you know, sky outside.
Oh, I'm sure they'll be asking that.
So you have that. The other thing too is like, I think it's becoming a magnet because of the, the ones there for all these, you know, trucks and vendors and things.
Oh, my God, that's something that was-
Yeah, well, you have a whole other zone for them to, to set up, although I just need Although, I just need to, the one that's about, you can't park with an X amount of feet from a driveway. And so I started wondering, how close is that one top of a truck at?
He's close.
Yeah, he's gotta close.
Because he parks his other vehicle there too.
Yes, so I, I don't know, but there's, there's some stuff there that I was like, interesting.
So what is the distance on that?
I don't remember. I, I, I am, I am the thing, because there actually, CHP in, in, in an area, actually put a diagram, talking about like a.
Can you send that to the town council so that we can all look at it? That'd be interesting.
Anyway, it was something, and, and crosswalks and corners, there's a bunch of stuff in that corner that's really interesting, like, might be.
Yeah, that's something.
Well, he takes up the crosswalk, I mean, the sidewalk.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, he takes up the sidewalk.
Well, this is the.
Not that parking on it.
This is, this is one of the core problems I have with, with shooters in general, is that if I am in a wheelchair or something, and they're walking the sidewalk. How is that not an A, A problem, right? Like, like, that, that is a wrong place to traverse, not.
There's one on Twenty Fifth and S that's right by Food for Less. On Twenty Fifth, they take a quarter, probably forty, fifty feet of the sidewalk, you can't get through it.
Well, it's like the bonds, the St. Canyon bonds, on the outside, on St., on the St. Canyon side, there's a vendor or two that set up. It seems to be, I think, one of them, but they should get the next one, tents and all, it's like you gotta walk through there.
That's not even allowed, I mean, it's, it's a state, that's an enforcement issue, the county, well, I don't know about that.
Yes, but.
But. There's another one that sets up, I, in front of the Forestry, next to like, in the, next to Van Dam's, which used to be kind of close, right? Or it is kind of close.
I've seen the ones that kind of across from McDonald's, they see.
Yeah, that one, but he now sets up a pop-up.
Yes.
And tables, he's got like a little dining room, right?
It's got sides on it.
So you have to sit and eat your tacos in shape.
It has sides on it.
Oh, yeah.
The tent has.
So it's like almost a structure.
It's, it's, they're vital, I mean, it's vital to safety.
Under control, Sierra U Sports, which has an exclusive lease, right? Or exclusive D, lease or something to use it. So MRCA really should be talking to Sierra U Sports to get permission to go across their property, to get to their property. And I'm just thinking, those two organizations might be able to work something out. Hey, we need your parking lot, you can use, and I'm not on the board of Sierra U Sports, I'm not part of Sierra U Sports, but I'm, we're in the community. And frankly, it's in our community, so both groups should be talking to us about this. That's what I think. Not to cause problems or control the situation, but, and I, I ripped into this, she was a lovely gal. There's, I came from like four parts of state and local government monies, okay? And one of them, it was supposed to be money, it was supposed to offset impacts of transportation problems. They got a million bucks for that, I don't understand the next to that. But I explained to her, I said, it's important for your, when, when you give money to an organization, that organization comes out and talks to the community. And you see it. She goes, well, we're like down to the property, and MRCA said, they networked with both of the stakeholders. And I said, you, you need to talk to, you need to talk to people in the community. So I submitted a whole public records after request to MRCA, asking for all the information on that. But I have some good news, I did get, and she goes, I think you're right, we need to, we need to, she was very nice. But she goes, I think the arrangements would be in the deed. And I said, okay, so I called county mapping and got the deed, and then I drove to Lancaster, got the deed. And in there, it does say that the, they will allow public parking in the public parking area. But.
Oh.
But, but you still, they might want it for their recreational use, it might not, it's, no, I mean, you need to be careful. They, they need to.
They're.
Because it might be public parking for the trails, the roadway, the vine, who's that? So, no, no, but then they, oh, no parking, because we don't, they can cut the parking down until their trails are, I don't know. So I, I, there's something smells really bad, bad with this part. Because the state of California valued the property at three point four acres. And what we saw before in MRCA's grant application measure rate was that this is a hundred and thirty acres, it could be developed with seventy homes, you need to stop that. But it can't be stopped by, you can put one house on it, that is it.
Back and back and further, it was sold right before that happened for a couple hundred grand.
Yes. And then another time.
Nothing, nothing changed, material, no group goods or nothing on it. And, and, and somehow you had to wait in full since you can't.
Yeah, well, well, two years ago, it was like, I think.
What's it again?
Two points.
Why, what about the new year?
Now it's two point two, it's like, oh, great. So I, I think, you know, just on my own, maybe, I'll do an analysis on this, but I've done a couple of records with the rest, plus all of the agencies that offered funding for it. And because something, something stinks there. And we saw this, the same thing's going on in the city of Los Angeles, where they bought all of these hotels that paid top dollars for really garbage. I mean, there's a whole federal investigation going on, judges, yeah, there should be. So this stuff, you know, it doesn't, if you're gonna do it, you, you don't do it in our town, and you talk to us first, you know, it's.
And if I recall correctly, the company that bought that property had done this several other times.
Yes.
Burden's Nest.
Yeah, Burden's Nest, whatever it's called, and, and somewhere in Santa Clarita had purchased the properties for a couple hundred grand and flipped them almost immediately.
For millions.
For millions.
Yep, yeah.
So there's something.
It's our taxpayer, Allison.
Something very scary.
So that's, MRCA responded, say, oh, we have information, but we'll get it to you maybe July or August. And then, and I was mad at them, I'm like, no, 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 at least give us your, your, your grant program applications you submitted for. So we'll, we'll see, because I think it's really important for Sierra U Sports to get, stand tall today. The last, last thing is that I believe the meeting is on Tuesday, Squirka is having a meeting, they usually cancel, so they probably won't be, but.
Yeah, that's true, they cancel every single time.
Yep, so Squirka is the group that, it's a combination of MRCA, the city, Santa Clarita, and I think Rancho Canago Parks Department or something. They have a, a work plan that they adopt every two years of land they want to acquire. And, you know, probably over half of active is land they want to acquire, acquire, including Nostal. So I think it's important that our town council comment to them that we don't appreciate that their work plan includes our communities and never bothered even talk to us about it. That's just outrageous in the end.
Just add talk to the list of things that they don't talk to us about.
Exactly. Well, this is the count, I'm not gonna, you know, this is more than Phoebe's or Edison's.
Why don't we tell her, ask him? I mean, if it's gonna happen in active, then why not?
Well, because they don't, I, I think they look at it, they don't feel like they need to. No one's going to, you know, like, they're gonna be cheerful from us, but we don't have the authority to tell them, no, so why talk to them? So they're just gonna do what they want. And, and, you know, even more egregious is the fact that like, they'll use funds allocated for me, and I didn't feel like, like, actually, it's, it's actually mind blowing. The, the companies it takes to, to be like, now, we're not gonna talk to you, we're gonna take your lunch money, and we're gonna use it.
Yeah, I think we should tell them. Exactly, so I think we should tell them, we will oppose every project in our community until, unless and until you talk to us first, on each project and engage the residents. I think that's fair.
I think that's fair.
Because we get put in a position where we have to come in after the fact, and then everybody's loaded and prepared.
Exactly.
Because we, we feel defensive, because we haven't been informed and given a chance to, like, forward the idea or give input.
Or, or worse, they just do it, like, this exact property, which was, we never got around it, they talked to, they, they tied the lie.
They lied to us.
They lied to everybody else.
Horriously.
Set up, set up, and then, and then when they backed the flame, it was the guy who took it.
And he was.
Yeah, he was, yeah, he was original. The, so, so that, that, you know, that, well, don't worry, you know, I don't know why you guys are upset about this, because we didn't talk to them. But, okay, so anyway, they, they still didn't inform. So it's like, and we didn't know about it.
And they knew we wanted to talk to you for that.
And, and they knew we were engaged about that location, as it was, so.
Because it's right there.
So the point is, like, that is actively avoiding, it's not like, oh, we didn't know, it's like, no. It's this exact parcel, we had this exact conversation about less than thirty years ago, and to do it.
So I, 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 I would go to this work of meeting if they had it. Do I need, we, we've already, two years ago, we approved a motion to go, and they just never had meetings. Except for the one time where I did go, and they approved the new work plan, that was even a half ago, then again, I've gone, so I have a fact, and so, yeah.
Yeah, I think we're good.
Okay, good, all right.
All right, proposed gas station, fast food, convenience store, run it.
Okay, I didn't mean this quick, but it's, it's bad. So, so there's a property right next to the Seventy Six, between Seventy Six and the temple. That was approved for a subdivision in, the tentative map was approved in nineteen ninety-three as a leased subdivision for office and retail space. That's what the tentative map said, that's what the final map said, and the final map on the front says, parcel two, which is the parcel that we're talking about, that's the one right at the front of Sierra Highway. That's parcel two is limited to three buildings for lease purposes only, okay? So now, the property owner or an agent of the, a developer, wants to put in a gas station, fast food, and convenience store, a sixteen pump gas station. That's twice as big as, it's huge, right? And on that spot. And the county, but, but because the recorded final parcel map has driveways in it to serve these retail office space that was approved. And those driveways actually are what ensure the retail office spaces what gets built. The, the developer has asked, let's just get rid of those driveways, okay? And regional planning said, yeah, okay, we can just process a modification to a, a final recorded map, okay? Using this section of the code. When you go to the section of the code, it says, you can amend or record a map if there are physical circumstances on the property that make it impossible to comply with the conditions. Or there are problems that have occurred beyond the developer's control that warrant this one modification. Well, it doesn't mean any of those conditions. The problem is, the developer just doesn't want to build the, the office lease project. He or she wants to build this other project. And so it gets worse. Regional planning has told them on a map that's been, that they've prepared, they've had several subdivision conveniences, to take, remove all reference to any development that will be, it's just a blank canvas, okay? We will deal with the convenience store and the gas station after we've modified the map. Anybody say CEQA segmentation below, you know? And then they've said that the whole thing is exempt from CEQA, because they're claiming what's called a classified exemption, which, classified applies to projects where you're just asking for a slight change in the land use limitations. This isn't a slight change, it's removing. Yeah, and they're saying, all they're doing, regional planning's saying, we're just erasing the driveways. No, because they're gonna also remove that restriction on page one, sheet one, I should say, of parcel map, the roof, final recorded parcel map. So it's changing a restricted leased subdivision for office and retail spaces into a completely unrestricted subdivision that has, okay? So that's a problem, classified doesn't apply. Another problem is, you have to look at CEQA, the whole of the action, the local gas station and the other. And even more, equally important is, whatever the heck they're gonna do there, it has to comply with the original environmental document that was adopted with the subdivision. And it was not exempt, I can guarantee it, I had it in the mid deck. So I'm trying to get that document right now. I put a request into Public Works, Public Works said, oh, that's, the document's in storage, so it's gonna take a while to get. I'm like, what do you mean it's in storage? Your planner should have been there before you leave. Said you were gonna process this, because you had to comply with CEQA. So I've also asked for Public Works, because regional planning can't seem to find anything. They've lost all, the hearing officer records, they've lost everything. I've, I've been through so many public records, I've lost on this thing. And the ones I'm getting are, thanks very much. I, you know, this gal, Lynch, she's a nice lady. Because, as I said, especially in active, that would be a narrow canyon. I said, and I just can't imagine putting wind turbines in a very high fire hazard severity zone. And I, I asked Katie, I said, is that something that the county would even consider? And I believe she said, no, I, I just, it's been too new to honor. Oh, I'm trying to think of everything we talked about. I asked this gentleman that was knowledgeable about, because he was so pro wind, I said, can you tell me if they've had any studies done on all the whales that have been washing up? Because I know California has some offshore wind that they're bad, they're looking to develop. I said, they've had a lot of dead whales on the Jersey Shore.
It screws up their.
Yeah, and I said, it messes with their internal sonar. And he's, he says, I do have some information on that, but he says.
It's not a problem.
No, he said, I do have some information on that, and I'll get it to you, but he says, it might take a couple of days. And I didn't remind him, but he said, he's got his brother in a nursing home. So he was kind of wound up with a lot of stuff to learn. And, but he said he did have some information on that, because I was wondering if he had any, like, studies, because I haven't heard anything. I've just heard that they are suspecting, and it messes with their internal sonar.
It doesn't get off the, it's more than.
The fact that there was no commenters makes me nervous, because that means that probably everybody on the line was in favor of everything that Supervisor Barber wanted. Because otherwise, they'd have spoken up. And that tells me that there's going to be a lot of letters being submitted on this, and unless people like us write letters in opposition, it's all gonna be stacked heavy. So that's another reason. So did you have any ideas about over concentration? Did they ask about that?
Um.
No, they didn't, I don't think. I raised it up, do you have more, what do you think? So that, that worried me too, because that should have been a centerpiece. That was a big deal, Supervisor Barber gave us a real solid on, and if we don't act on it and compel them to use it, then we're gonna be up to freak without a pattern. So, well.
I think I asked you about the very high fire hazard severity zone, and wind turbines be something the county would consider in an area like that. Plus, it would be right smack down at the FCA. Because they're, you know, they did it like on the east, on the slopes going up into Angeles Forest. Or I said, and I would hate to see wind turbines on the Sierra Paloma. We know they've already proposed that once, but it wasn't, it was that years ago, it was developers.
Well, the other thing they're also doing is green hydrogen, which I had a problem with, and we talked a lot about it, is it takes a lot of water. And then, you know, these hydro, they, they manufacture the hydrogen in this place, and then they distribute it to every place. So there's a lot of hydrogen trucks running under the freeway.
It's very funny.
It, well, it's like, you think that's just bad, I mean, at least it's not toxic, it's just, you know, Hindenburg, it's basically what it is. We all know what happened to Hindenburg, right? So, yeah. So, you know, green hydrogen is something else we need to comment on, so, because that's part of it, so I don't know. All right, so I, I, I'm moving with that. And what you've said makes me very concerned, nobody's.
Yeah, there was no way commenting, and that, I was like, where is anybody? And I couldn't see, there was nothing to tell me how many people were on the media. Sometimes they'll have a.
Oh, really?
Oh, yeah.
That's bad for. There might not have been anyone else, but you and him.
Fifty percent.
It's also concerning, because it's human nature, if you're an economist, is to come up with your comments especially negative.
Yeah.
But if you're online like that, and there's no negative comment.
That's what makes me very worried, places, if there were people there, they were very. Just like it happens with all the cannabis things. Almost everybody on it is pro cannabis, right? It's like, oh, Emerald, L.A. Emeralds and what, oh, he's like cannabis people. Yeah, so. All right, so I'm moving, we provide comments to regional planning regarding the area orders on concentration benefits, wind turbine, green hydrogen, impacts, and other issues. Concerns, other concerns.
Good saying.
Yes.
I think you're clear. Any other discussion? Paul Taylor.
Hi.
Close.
You did good there, Ruth, on that video. I think people had, had trouble getting on, like you did, you had to write in the comments.
Yeah. Oh, did you go to it?
Yeah, I was there, I saw what Ruth was talking, that gentleman.
I was chatting with that gentleman, directly chatting with him.
He was well experienced, he was telling us. He was well experienced, he was telling us all about his experience and his knowledge.
He was talking about that, that they were trying to come up with a merging of still using agricultural land and then putting solar on it. And I had just read something about that.
Is it possible?
Nope, nope. And they call it admirable takes, and AI is going to help them build the dreams.
So they make the solar things really, really high?
And then AI helps them decide what crops would grow underneath that they would still be able to harvest.
And what about, what about all the big dust from the ag operation on the solar? And how are you gonna wash them off?
Oh, no, they're gonna find a way to do it. Because, one of the arguments against them taking over farmland for, for solar is that they're taking away private farmland.
Yes.
And so they're trying to find a way to marry the two, and they think this is going to be the answer. Because they're gonna elevate and weigh up in the air on stilts and be able to run trackers underneath the pine, oh freaking no. But it's called admirable takes, and that's their main objective.
You're saying you made it happen, you do rooftop solar.
Yeah, with all the places that already disturb, that, I don't think it's.
Are you sure that wasn't the cannabis?
No, that's who the guys who drive off the cans are.
Oh, yeah. Hoppers.
I can't, okay. Alright, parks are a issue.
I guess the lady isn't here from.
No.
Is she going to, is she gonna come back?
Uh, Julie, we had to get this morning. They also cannot contact her ever since she left for another thing. Remember she could not come today with the delivery.
So, never, never you go with her?
They were not able, they were not trying to contact.
Who was her name?
Nancy Harris.
So.
She's the one in charge of the parks. Nobody touches that one, that's her baby. Well, so we'll try, I have this.
Well, I have some park comments, so I hope that I can share.
Yeah, what you wouldn't do, that's.
Okay, but if anybody knows Nancy Harris, oh, could you, um, should you email the town council her contact information that I shared? As of course, the county's formally inviting her to an upcoming meeting, because parks are really important. If you want to collaborate with her, send you her email.
Yes, that's it.
I just need your feedback. Yes, please. So, I have a few things about parks. First of all, in March, the board of supervisors authorized eight hundred fifty thousand dollars in Measure A funds to repair the Valverde Community Pool there. I, Valverde has a pool in Measure A. But I just thought, you know, we could see what they've got in that area. So I pulled up, according to Park Needs Assessment from twenty sixteen, that area has seven different parks to serve thirty-five thousand seven hundred people. It includes three pools and a lake.
Gee, wow.
So, the pool to people ratio is about one pool per thousand. So, I have to apologize and admit, I have been wrong for the last two years. Don't like regret that. I have been saying that unincorporated communities in the North County have been.
Sororly.
Sororly, yeah, left out of, have been.
One's not even over yet.
Have experienced inequitable distribution of park facilities. I was wrong. Because it's just the Antelope Valley that's experiencing inequitable distribution. Because North County's doing fine apparently. At least, the North County, North County to the west of us. So, it's, it's pretty bad. Um, so I apologize for that error. It's just we folks on the north slopes of, and the north slopes of San Gabriel and east of, uh, the north of the, north of the north slopes of San Gabriel, he's so statically, yeah, so. Anyway. Another thing is that the Act of Town Council, um, well, okay. We, I learned last week, totally by accident, trying to do some research on the Happy Trails Day, that the, that property that we all talked about several years ago that was going to be the Catherine Barker Sports Facility Complex, or Catherine. And, that, that actually was sold last year. And MRCA now owns it. It was sold for more than three point two million dollars, so even more. I think before it was just one point seven million. It's like, or, it's way more than it was before.
By the park?
Yes. It's, no, no, not by the park, it's by law fields, it's right across from the rehab. It's the property that was moving to a sports facility complex that they, you know, they told all the high school and everything, and all, everybody got all excited about it. Wrote all these letters to support the Measure A, RPOSD, they were about to approve it. A million dollars of our Measure A funds was going to go into it. So we, we invited them to a meeting, the guy showed up, and we asked him about it, he goes, well, that was just something I thought we could do with the property. I'm like, and I got, I got, I got, you know, a bunch of people from the high school to come, and they were, they were first, they were mad at us. Because we were opposing this great project, and I just, and they finally got a treat to them, they understood it was all a lie. Because I, MRCA sent us the proposal, it was all to be set aside. So, it's really shocking what they've done on this. And so I've asked, they were, the records request from MRCA. I was concerned, because I'm just gonna be blunt, you know, I don't know what's going on with the Sierra Sports and all that other stuff. But I believe there is a good possibility that the parking that Sierra Sports relies on for their events is not on the Sierra Sports land, it is on this property that MRCA just bought and is going to supposedly set aside and nobody can touch it. That's what they always do. They always say we do parks, and they say we're gonna do trails, and blah, 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 but I've yet to see it happen. So, um, so I'm very concerned about California plantings. So, for example, a community that has a hundred thousand people should probably get a hundred maybe watts of BES.
Oh, she has, yeah, proportional to the second.
Exactly, so that is, and I said, this is my opinion, this is not the Act of Town Council's opinion, I'm talking to the resident. But, so that's, so they want, and I, and I pointed that out. It's like over concentration, always, always is, is what they call per capita based, per person based. So, not, not supervisor, so that's another thing, um, that we can talk about, so, I don't know, I'll read these things, so.
We'll start you saying, yeah, we wrote a letter on the benefits, and we turned it into a blank page.
That's right, it was all the benefits.
There's nothing in here, like, yeah.
There's no benefits.
Oh, I'm, I'm doing this, this is good enough. Does anyone? Yes, does anyone at any reality, it's how I use, about what kind of benefits we can get, or what over concentration means? Or, you don't have to answer it today, you can just send us, but. Um, so I, I guess I'll, I have, I can, I can.
I mean, I think you're right on the fact that no community should ever bear the risk for any more than could service their community.
I think that's totally fair.
You know, I participated in the last comment session the county had for the REO, and it was supposed to be renewable energy projects versus, this one was not for BES, they wanted to participate in this.
Yeah, so you went to that one?
I, online, it was online. And I don't know how many people were on that, Katie and I posted it. And, um, sadly, people just weren't making comments.
Oh, really?
It was me and this other gentleman, and what was his name? Uh, he was very pro-wind, um, and very knowledgeable, obviously in the industry. But, um, he was a very nice man. But, I, so he was four. He was, yes, but he was, he was very reasonable, he was very knowledgeable, and so he and I kind of, you know, like, I would comment on his comments, and we'd go back and forth, and Katie was kind of staring, because we were like, the battle. And I said, it's, uh, you know, Ruthie and, I don't know, I can just go say her name, it was Jeff, I don't think it was Jeff. Ruthie and Jeff show, it's gay, and, you know, I'm gonna make another comment. But no, but I kept waiting for other people to, you know, put their hand up and make comment, so I would.
Yes.
Alright, Paul Taylor.
Hi.
I suppose. I suppose she's here.
Hi, sorry, I'm typing.
Here we go. Alright, next up, REO ordinance update.
Okay, um, alright, we just highlight this, Kelly. Um, okay, so, the county, regional planning is preparing this REO renewable energy ordinance update per board motion. And there's two parts, basically, there's the part that has to do with everything but BES, and then there's the part that has to do with BES. The meeting for the BES, uh, product, uh, workshop will be on, like I said, June seventeen, love. It's really hard when they don't post, of, of, like I said, a flyer with the link, if it gets put out there, so.
Yeah, Jackie, I looked and I did not get even a actual email yet on that.
Yeah, I didn't either.
Yeah, so I think because it's more than two weeks out, it will hopefully come through.
Okay, so keep the June seventeen open, because it's on the BES part. But it's all being done in the REO ordinance. And so they, they scheduled a workshop a few weeks ago. They put the announcement out very, just right after, I think, the Act of Town Council meeting. And then we also learned that it was on top of the meeting that was for illegal dumping, that Cal Recyclers participated in. And so I asked, I said, okay, you know what, you need to give us another time, because you can't take Antelope Valley BES.
Take one of them.
Yeah, because you could go to the dump meeting in person, which is what I did. And so they did, they gave us another meeting. So I don't know if anyone went to the first meeting, the REO, that I could go to, but I went to the second one, and we provided, a couple other people were there from the Antelope Valley, a lot of comments pertaining to allowing authorizing wind turbines in the Antelope Valley, authorizing above ground, um, uh, transmission lines, which are now not allowed, authorizing solar farms in economic opportunity areas, which is just really crazy. And so, um, and they're, they're now collecting these comments, and they're going to probably plop out of the ordinance within the next six months after they collected the BES comment. So I thought, I just, I can answer any questions that you want. It was a long meeting, a lot of good comments. A big part of the comment, and what they want to hear from the communities are about is community benefits. How do these projects benefit the community? And so, I can't really answer that question, like, but I can tell them how it, don't, no, things don't benefit the community. And one of the things I pointed out is that, you know, I keep seeing, not just the county, but other entities saying, oh, well, we'll benefit the community because we'll build a microgrid for the community. But the microgrid does you no good, because the lines connecting the microgrid to your house are the ones that Edison cuts, and she is the S. So, microgrids are just.
That'd be the ultimate, like, hey, we put it out there in three days, oh, yeah, we did.
Yeah, well, that's, that is it.
We'll get that back.
We'll get that back.
We'll get that back.
So, so it's like, you know, you, you have to disabuse yourself of this notion, that microgrids work. Microgrids work if Edison doesn't cut off the power, but then we won't need the microgrids, you know? So it's kind of, I mean, unless, you know, what, the big earthquake hits, we might do it, then the power lines probably won anyway. Um, another thing was, and Mario brought this up, he's with the, there was an RTC, or he's with the RTC. He said, well, you know, these projects are going to make a lot of money for the county. And we know, he was like, how much, two million, two million a year, the county's giving like, revenue from just the human or BES, right? That's just one project. And so, um, so, and you know, the heck of his position is, oh, well, that money goes to the county, the county is looking for it for the community. It's like, hell, they don't, it goes to the general fund. So, um, Mario said there should be a significant, I mean, a significant amount of that money, she wrote to the community, this and that.
But, but, that's true, you know.
Yeah, exactly. And, and, um, then I also said, that money cannot go to provide things that we're already supposed to get as basic services, like, you know, road paving and stuff like that. Disesstment.
Fire safety.
Because that's, you know, like, yeah, because, and so, so I asked, there's a lot of people thinking about it. And they, regional planning has asked communities, what, what can we perceive as being, could be a benefit of this? Now, this is not the BES part, this is just the solar farm part and wind turbines, which I think, we have a lot of those. Uh, maybe not solar farms, but certainly wind turbines, utilities, care wind turbines. So we need to, I, I'm thinking we should write a letter, write some comments on this.
We can have a few birds in the sky.
Yeah.
So that doesn't matter, I guess, and birds.
Have you washed your cars so often?
I, I honestly can't think of any benefits. Except for, except for killer, park killers, well, for the same, except for what Mario, I mean, that's a significant amount go to. And not, and not go to like, some, some.
No, no, my problem is I don't trust that thing to work, because already when we have some, people try to say for other reasons, because in purchasing land in our own backyard, they say it's part of it.
Oh, yeah, it's the moneymaker.
Correct, so that's why I don't, I don't, I don't buy that, I don't trust it, because there's no mechanism. It's, I'll go back to all this stuff, it's like, there's no force, there are no limitations, where they're inefficient with a turbine. There's no way for us to adequately apply that in a way that can be productive. There's not a, a local governing body that can take that, say, a hundred percent handily. Act of City Hall gets this money and then they apply it to do things like, I'm gonna pull, they're gonna fund it, I mean, we have two million dollar bank, whatever. But there's no entity, so it's like, it would go in some coffre, and somebody would find some way to, to then, to then abuse us.
And, and, and I pointed this out too, um, in the AB two oh five process, CDC requires you to have a benefit plan. And the one benefit plan that I looked at with the county then, I went through it, and every single benefit they put, actually benefited that BES. And not the community at all. So, um, them or, or Wise or, or the warehouse, whatever, somebody to own their all of this timber, just.
There's a solar slash BES, integrated BES project in Fresno, west of Fresno County that's at the point in the CDC process where they're doing, um, public outreach and stuff. And I read through all the transcripts from that meeting, and I was just astounded that maybe one person was there to say, well, we're worried about the state of the batteries and fire safety. Everybody else was, was in it for us. Don't forget about our group, you know, we needed to, oh, you know, how much money are we gonna get? Our group is this, our group, and I thought, so these people are so, I think, poorly informed. And you know darn well that the county made sure that they know everything. But they were just more interested in the community benefits, all the.
It's just the money.
Yeah, they just wanted to know what their group was gonna do. And, and it wasn't just tribes, it was, you know, residents, it was, it was sad, very sad.
Well, you know what, if you, if you have access to one of those transcripts, I'll forward it to Mario, and see what that would count for.
We need to.
Yeah, did the darkened, the darkened project, docket?
Oh, yeah, darkened.
So solar slash BES, it's gonna be huge. Don't forget how many megawatts it is going to be. So, and it's on farmland. Um, so, I don't know, I think we should write a letter, but I don't know, do you guys think about that? With some of these concerns, or, or, uh, other concerns, like you, like you just expressed, the money, you know? Not, not, not too sanguine with the idea of no money?
I mean, that would be, that would be, I don't, I keep envisioning, sure, then, maybe from, um, order agency directly inside the community, that this is, that, like, whatever else, some kind of order, it's time for me.
It would have to be official county something.
That's what I'm saying, they have, that, that could then disperse this from.
Yeah, we don't want all the money to go to MRCA.
No, no, that's.
That's where it's gonna go.
No, that's exactly my point, is it, is it that or what again? And I don't trust the appointment process, because you can have other supervisors influence it, and who do you expect to, out of our, the actual, it's gonna be not representative of processing, processing between the things that, that. On the other hand, yeah, theoretically, if that, that would be part of something like this, we'd form this kind of bodies that, maybe that provides an avenue pathfully to have something, like we were talking about, well, have the ruins, but have it, you're like, well, there's an entity now that has funding, they can hire an engineer. This may, that could be a benefit, that could solve, is this provides a regulatory. This may, that could be a benefit that could solve, is this provides a regulatory stream that stays in the community, has a timer on it, is given over there by the side. But it would have to be very clearly defined. I think, I'm terrified a little bit, we have that idea, this, you know, all MRCA people on board decide where the money goes.
That's, that's the thing. The other thing that they would want to input on is overconcentration. I brought that up, I said, "That was an important part of what the board said." And so, "We want to make sure that you're defining the concentration properly." She goes, "Well, you know, that's part of the reason we're talking about here, we wonder what you guys think." I said, "Well..." It can't be overconcentration based on supervisor, because that's wrong. I mean, there's like, no, if you have, if, if it's done based on just supervisory district, and each district gets 2,000 megawatts of BASS, guess where it's all going to end up? An active, I mean standalone, is what I'm talking about. Because, well, anyway, because then your, concentration has to be, the issue of overconcentration has to be on the community level. And then I said, "The best way to assess overconcentration or concentration is, is ensuring that every community shoulders..."
Yeah, exactly. Once, once they go, your history goes on, "What's happening in your area?"
Yeah.
Like, eh...
Yeah, then they up your rates because you've claimed it three times in a year, you know?
So, I was going to ask, at this PSPS meeting, would Aguado City residents be able to participate in this?
Sure.
This is, as far as we know...
This is an ASME.
Yeah, it's an ASME. So, this is just a, here's what goes into the PSPS, the process. This is, I'm explaining...
And I've connected with Aguado City quite a bit on this issue.
They're over there.
They're over there, yeah. So, okay, so what we'll do is, I will, I will, I will give Mr. Ford Jim's contact information. He can reject you if they want to have a meeting here. I don't want to have a meeting, but, and then, and ask for end of August.
We're going to drop the power.
Yeah. You have an idea.
Light switches are about to go out, right? I want my AC panel, right? Don't worry, the pitchforks and torches will lighten the way.
Get the firewood.
Well, these are the firewood, a little higher. I'm not going to say we're going to put on it.
And keep in mind, my group's occupancy is 70.
Yes, yes, well...
Well, that was a problem. Fire department, yeah.
I was there, there was, I can't remember what the store, but they were here. Well, maybe, maybe it was...
It's PSPD 2019.
Well, no, I think it was different. What about talking to the school? Getting involved by trying to see if we can use the...
Oh, there you go. Yeah, yeah, well, ASMEs do...
No, really correct, I'd say if you get connected, I'd say, "If we want, you know, if we want the school to be involved..."
That's good.
Better way to do it than...
I'm just thinking too much of the dots and people.
You need to jam.
Well, I want to, I want to, I'm happy to host. I don't know who will show up, that's the problem. It's like, yeah.
Well, the last, the last time we had a PSPS meeting here, it was fire department shut down. It got ugly.
Oh, it got very ugly. So I just stood, I stood out in the hall, that was good.
So, yeah, maybe we should ask for like high desert or...
Yeah, I, I think, I think maybe why is just because in it, it does give them some...
That's cool, yeah, nobody knows.
We just feel that, then, we think, I would love to like, you know, have all the kids in effect that like, "Hey, how many, how many days did you miss the..."
Yeah, it's just, I think, if I'm not mistaken, they had a water issue too. And are they in a well at Vasquez?
No. I don't think so.
So they had the PSPSs or whatever, but then they also, right after that, had a water issue. And I don't know, pipes burst, maybe?
Ooh, well, they should bring that up.
Yeah. Yeah, there was a water issue afterwards. Because I know, my granddaughter said they got told that if they didn't show up, they couldn't go to their softball game, because you have to be present in order to go to your softball game.
Oh.
So they dropped the kids off with no power. And, I mean, not all the kids, but a lot of kids went, and then they canceled the softball game. So, Beck, she texted, "Grave, can you come get me?" They canceled my softball game, and I'm like, "Why are you at school? Because if we didn't go to school, we couldn't play the game." Yeah, but there was no power. So, yeah.
So much logic on top of logic.
Yeah.
No, I told you. All right.
Yeah. So next up, SBA QMD space water.
Yeah, this is kind of rude. So I heard a few weeks ago that the A QMD is putting together new space heater regulations that require retrofits. Now, new instruction to judge retrofit existing homes to replace your non-electric space heaters with electric space heaters. That was there...
When you say space heater?
Used.
By, by central heat?
Yes, you're...
That means propane?
Well, yes, propane. Okay, so, let me, yeah, so I talked to the, the, because half of Acton is in the Southwest A QMD, half is in the AB A QMD.
I identified you. That work?
No, I'm not. You're, you're not intersectional, is that what you're saying?
You're not intersectional.
Anything? Okay, I'm sorry, okay. So I talked to the, the, the lead engineer at South Coast A QMDs doing this. And that was what they were talking about doing. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
School starts August 13th.
Okay, so, so, yeah, that would be like, that's two weeks after the school starts.
25th, I think.
10th, they want it.
And so, and basically, it was what the county originally wanted to put into the climate action plan, which was a barter, amended the motion, which was great. So I asked, you know, what, what arrangements, or... Yeah, exactly. Are you giving to residents in areas that have unreliable electric services at a non-power, and which experience?
How much is fire with the...
He said that originally, A QMD was going to require electric space heater everywhere. He goes, and I said, "You know, propane." He goes, "We, we don't regulate propane. People can use propane, whatever, you know, whatever." And I said, "Except your regulation is on the units, the heater units." And the heater units can use propane or natural gas, just depending on what your surroundings, right? So it's like, you're regulating the units themselves, so don't be telling me that you're not...
It's fine, yeah.
I was just like, don't be telling me you don't regulate propane, because you're not going to let people with propane go by these things, I'm like, you know. Anyway, he, he didn't understand. Didn't understand, or quality engineer, whatever. So, but, they, they, he said they heard from residents in the Arrowhead, Lake Arrowhead area and San Bernardino County, that that's a real problem. I asked him if he heard anything from anybody in North County, because Supervisor Mitch was on the A QMD board and should be representing us, right? As we're... No, not a word. But fortunately, because I didn't learn about this until just, you know, just very shortly, recently. So they have changed it now. They're going to, their plan now is just to charge residents who want to use non-electric a lot more money.
Well, good.
So, we're going to be punished because we have a lot of electricity.
How does this happen?
That you have to pay a fee.
Well, you mean like when I buy a new one?
Yes, when you buy a new one. So they're not going to force you to retrofit, and, and...
When you say space heater, you mean your whole house?
Central heater, yeah, central heater.
Whatever you do to heat your house. If it's a pellet stove, they want it to be...
At least that's what I mean.
My understanding is that you can put a pellet stove in, that's not part of it, but... Anyway, so, now, I haven't had a chance to read the regulations, and they haven't had hearing, but they're running up here soon. So we could provide comments if the council wants to. I don't know what the comments are, because I have to read them. For us, I haven't had a chance to do that, so...
It, it, I mean, I just wonder the dollar amount that makes the, like, fixes that change. Put all of that into two, well, maybe one.
Well, in California, it's much higher than anywhere else.
A generator get it out because then they, because they uh they removed the van temporarily because of the wildfire and the power shut off, but that gets to the state.
Is that the air resources?
I don't know.
Wait, banning all new generators?
Yeah, gas powered generators, like you'll like go buy used five hundred B over.
Oh, so I, because I thought they were just requiring really high quality engines, the tier four.
Yes, but most places don't have them. So in other words, your selection is like very, but they opened back up to all for a short period of time because
Okay.
there was like, there was like too many factors at stake.
Okay.
My sister was in Arizona, just give me your order.
Yeah, I was gonna say, people, people were literally taking trucks and trailers and going to Arizona.
I went to Vegas.
Yeah.
I didn't.
Well, um.
What's wrong with you?
I had a wife and almost like milk in here and get our water line.
Oh, I understand.
Drive it home, I swear.
Okay, just, let's not, let's not talk about it.
I don't like it a lot.
I guess you have, yeah.
I had a house in.
In Arizona, yeah, let's go.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so I guess we could do a letter, we could do a letter, I haven't, I haven't read it yet, so I, I'm only going on what he said.
Yeah, so I think it's risky. I, I think stuff other than, it's clearly gonna be some kind of fee, and I think that that's abusive to people.
Yeah, I think it's fair to say that, I'm just really.
It is, just, just, I don't, yeah, the, the, the population that we're talking about is, is it not here? Compared to, you know, what, what they're talking about for, if it's for car debt, for instance, if it's across the whole county, even then, it's like, well then you can raise a million dollars and buy a solid five dollar fee, and it's crazy. What, I.
Oh, this wing would.
I, I don't know what I, what I see is, I'd also pay more, but my voice is like, it is across three million homes every year. Five bucks they'd raise, that's how much they're gonna do it. But since it's a smaller group, it's like, what they currently charge you? Five hundred bucks, a thousand dollars a group.
Well, they're claiming it's from NOx control, but I think it's G H G, and they just.
They're pushing us to the electric company who's turning around and.
Not serving us.
Starting November, it's gonna be a twenty-four dollar service charge monthly.
Just to be.
To pay for the maintenance of it, because so many people have gone solar.
Well, and they're also now, there's that bill I just mentioned, that they're trying to eliminate all that meeting, and just so, just so we're clear, Edison doesn't lose money on that either.
Right.
Right? It, it, so it's all nonsense, everything they're saying. It's like, because, you know, I, they don't pay me eighty-four cents a kilowatt hour. I pay eighty-four cents a kilowatt hour, but, you know, when I use, actually use our power, but they don't pay me that. They pay me like four cents a kilowatt hour. But they turn around and take my power and sell it to my neighbor for eighty-four cents a kilowatt. So they're just making money.
Oh, okay.
So there's like so much wrong with this, but anyway, so, okay, so I, so I'll make it mostly right, provide comments.
The, the only point you're gonna hold up in the model is make them, when they do a community center, they get all the publicity about we're reaching out to the community and, while make them pay, make them, uh, cause right now, the lawyers, uh, have more say than the bookkeeper. And you need to.
What do you mean by make them pay?
They, they, right. But the problem is a week day.
I want a fully furnished community center with people there to answer questions. I want
Showers.
showers and I want, uh, cause Vista Valencia, north of working, and bathrooms, broadly with showers in the bathrooms. And I want, uh, large containers of water where people get, I wanna make it set up trucking water to people.
We did, we did bring that up, we did talk about that, what would their kit go to, to truck water, because the fact that we have somebody to go through with the animal? I still think that they have no concept. I think that, based upon that, I got the question, I go, well, well, we've got a water truck, like, as a back end, like, what water truck is not going to be?
Especially people with horses.
Well, yeah, the water truck is gonna stop, they're gonna have to be sold, so you six hundred.
They don't have to be a coupon for ice, that's outdated. Well, maybe they'll take it, cause you can stack your freezer.
Where are you gonna buy the ice? Everybody shut down.
Yeah, so.
Major have a rice truck.
Yeah, you have a ice truck. But see, they chip out every way, so they get the publicity of, of, we're here to serve the community without any of the cost.
Right. I see what you're saying. And, and, and we brought that up and said, you know, when somebody has to go to the bathroom, and they come to the community center? It says, go to Amargosa, and it's like, yeah, sorry.
We bought a lot of dry ice, but we had to drive to Langas where Adam and I, out by the old fairgrounds.
Yeah.
Um, we drove out there to buy, uh, the, the dry ice, which was the only thing that was working, because the other stuff was just other than your freezer. So I probably spent a hundred and fifty bucks on dry ice.
Well, that was your gas and your time and all this, I mean, it, it, it.
But I did save tons of people from acting and been out there.
Sure, really.
Yeah.
Well, see, that's the kind of, these are the kind of comments that we need to, to make, and I'm hoping, I see, I think we should do it in June. That, that's to be, or mid-July at the latest.
But why not do those in the, in July, and people are, like, you know, it's summer.
They, they didn't indicate June's possible, so when, when should, I mean, I, I, we, I think a lot of people are, might be available two Mondays from now, just because we missed a meeting on that day.
I think it's, I, I think it's fine, and like I said, I just, the main thing personally, is I'm not getting, I, I've been through, uh, the visual approaches and somehow, like, uh, we're not necessarily directed at this, but I don't want, I'm not running the M C for.
No, no. This would be an Edison meeting, we could help them set it up, we'll collaborate with Jim and stuff like that, but it's going to be Edison land, Edison bond meeting, because. I feel like they should provide some sort of credit on it, because two people can prove that they have purchased backup generator systems to, because of all these P S that we're facing, a lot of people spend a lot of money on generators.
Yeah, just a few thousand.
Yeah, we, yeah, we spent eleven thousand five hundred.
So that, these are the kind of comments that, and I, they need to be organic from residents, and we wanna be in the audience as a resident, right?
I, I deserve that, I'm, I'm, you know.
But the whole Southern California innocent, so confident as a company, they, they just, I went on there today and forgot about your car. And so I wanted to see about their gizemount. Yeah. Oh my God, trying to get around the website on, you know, what gizemounts they offer, oh yeah, I can get up to eighty-four hundred dollars for the, well, that's if you live in the district of that.
Yes, yes.
Or if you make, if you make, uh, three hundred percent below the poverty level, if I'm, if I'm making three hundred percent below, I can apply electric car.
I know, I'm stupid.
Yeah, I mean, if everything they offer on the website.
Well, yeah, I mean, utilities have decided to define rural in such a way that no rural community can take advantage of the programs for, um, uh, backup power for schools, including us. We're not rural, according to, the, the only community in, or, uh, L A and Riverside County, I believe, that matches the rural definition is on the city, uh, is on the island of Academy.
Wow.
It's like, you know, they do, they do all of these things, but it's very frustrating.
Looks the least.
And the school district, it was a big issue at the school board meeting the last month. We gotta find backup, oh yeah, the schools were decimated, so these are all things, yeah, it's bad.
We mentioned it years, we mentioned it a while back, when they had, uh, when we lived in Amargosa, they had a big town meeting because of the fires, and, uh, they brought in their representatives who were supposed to be their specialists in the area, and they were trying to get across to them that they needed power to run the, uh, for, for the water.
Yes, yeah, the air force, the air force.
And they just, they said, no, you just go over to the, turn it on. And it's like that.
I don't think that this meeting, we explained to them, you don't have water, you're in a well, you don't have a toilet, you don't fly to have not have a toilet for five, six days, it's not good.
Well, since meeting in Amargosa got hostile, hostile, they stopped the meeting and rescheduled it.
Sure.
Oh, I remember, we grew, I was a part of them, yeah.
Well, one year is like that, it was like, same thing, and, and they needed to, like, virtual, and, and more people, like, hey, the problem is, is we're now years and years removed, and so, I, what they do is maybe really need people to show up.
So what do you, yeah, so what do you all think? How, Jim, if the light are available two weeks from today, I don't know what it is, but would, does every, is that a good day for people, or is that, I mean, you guys are here, so tell us what you think.
We'll make it a good day.
Do we wanna make it?
Schools out, that's the only problem, is I swear this town, when schools out, like, people take off.
Right.
And that's the downside.
We were trying to get this meeting, we asked for it in January, we asked for it before March, and they'd said, yeah, we can do that.
They didn't, we didn't say which March, that was our bet. Why do we talk about?
No, actually, I think they said June, and I said, we need March, so now we're moving to July and August, but it sounds like they're willing to do June, so.
Well, if you do it in August, people come back, the schools back to session in August, right?
Yeah, so, so, so the flip side, so, so I think, I think end of August might be best, in that, in that scenario, looking at like whether we do it shortly, I, I, again, I think we need enough runway to really get, this really is the impact.
Well, can we ask for two? One, meeting, we present all our issues, the next meeting, maybe August, they present the results, and then maybe hear from others who couldn't come.
One event, so I guess we'll get ready to go into.
Well, we were trying, that's what I wanted to do earlier, we're just thinking in terms of like, it wanna happen like this.
But it may have more urgency in August, because they are getting close.
If they shut off.
But if we just give them a bunch of comments, and then we never hear, we, you know, they're, they're probably not gonna be able to answer all their questions there.
Yeah, right.
There are a lot of questions there, so.
Yeah, the whole, the only, like, the only concern I have is if, if the news like this, that's, that's sending a message that.
Are you all available to come in two weeks, and would you come?
Probably, but I feel like you wouldn't get as many.
The max.
Because like Adam said, schools are out, people just, they go on their drugs.
I, a lot of people look at data, I can't, I can't pull out my phone and work. I can check my calendar, I can check the calendar in my office, if you want, give me some dates.
Oh, yeah.
And I.
Sixteen somehow.
Juneteenth.
June to August.
Twenty-third.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-third, preparation. Those are Mondays, it's wide open, the sixteenth and the twenty-third and the thirteenth, wrong.
Okay, so I don't know, what, what do you guys think? Should we just, just do one?
I, I lean towards one, and, and with enough runway, and we can, like, define it, and then work to get as many people as possible, because you think, maybe just.
Schools come into session like August sixteenth, don't they?
It's early, it's, yeah.
Yeah, it's like mid-August.
It's mid-August, yeah.
So, cause I, I just feel like, they need to feel, I, one, we have to deliver that, which is you have people in here, two, they need to feel that it's not, again, I, I constantly feel like we're back in the, they think it's we're just a problem, and then like, oh, there's, there's, there's six people that's out that have a problem, you know, because everybody else is.
Oh, no, they, they do, but the, that is their line of thinking, because when I went to the community center, I was talking with a guy, and we were going back and forth, and he, he looks up at me, he goes, oh, so you're saying, uh, you don't want the electricity cut off, you want fires? That, no, that's not what I'm saying.
I, I didn't realize it was one or the other, but.
Yeah, well, I think fire.
That, you know, that's fair, that's what it is, you know, they think it's gonna be fire, then they need to rewrite their whole wildfire mitigation plan that says, we're going to cut power if we have a, 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 a five percent that it's gonna start fires. None of the data, none of the calculations that I've spent years studying, and they have no support.
Then, then why are they just, like, especially if, if that's the case, everything is off, and that's fine, like, like, actually, I'm more okay with that. If, if we're off, and the transmission lines are off, great, because you don't want, I, I promise you that will not be off that long, and in other words, they all gonna be off, a lot of people, I don't really care, but then, everything, it was good for us, it's good for the three million people living on their job that don't.
And to be fair, I mean, they were pulling this stuff in twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, when Malibu would get cut for two day, two, two, two hours, and we got cut for two, three weeks, there was like a six, it was a four week period where people in, in Amargosa had no power for three solid weeks, I mean, it was just ridiculous.
So, yeah, I, I, I lean towards one meeting, plenty of those, it, it just sucks that they couldn't do it in March, for that one. One, fresh out of your mind, I do think that it sucks is that the longer you go from the, the, what people work, there's nothing like paying, like, having power on the two weeks.
Well, I know, but make no mistake, the whole purpose of this is to, for us to decide whether or not we're satisfied and we aren't gonna file a complaint, because what's on the table is a decision. So, I want to be sure everybody knows that.
There's eighteen and twenty-five in August, or both Mondays.
Okay. Cause if you want to do the eighteen, you guys have heard it, two starts.
August twenty-fifth, well, we can also, did, did you say school starts?
We don't.
I'm, I'm not sure, but.
Okay.
I can, I can find out.
Because we can, I'll make an announcement, the school board meeting, and they, because hopefully the, the school board will be there, because they're really, they were devastated by in January.
They, they lose a lot of money.
I think they got a variance from the state education board, they got, they didn't get cut. Um, what is the process for a property owner who's on kind of a blind curve, or a curve that doesn't have really great sign distances, um, on, say, on Sierra Highway, to get a permit to develop a project that's gonna have a lot of traffic in it? We, we asked public works about four or five, it was just before COVID, to please stop, well, we asked the county to stop approving, you know, truck stops and stuff like that, truck storage on places that have blind curbs or commuters from seventy miles an hour, and I think they started, they said they were gonna start oversight distance requirements, even for ministerial development, because it's really dangerous when you put a, a truck or an R V storage place on Soladad or Sierra on a curve, and, you know, it's bad. So do you know anything about that? Is there, are they doing that now, and if not, I mean, I asked them again, start doing that?
I know that Ken Succi is gonna be the, the right contact for that, and giving you the, uh, anything I tell you would be misspeaking, and so I think he's gonna be able to, um, you know, there, certainly, you know, there are certain goals around development that what you can, and can't provide, developers do, um, so, um, I think he's probably.
Well, what have you done here, you know, because we've had this discussion with public works people, that county has provisions in the code that allow them to ask for road dedications, even for ministerial projects. And so, you know, if you can get road dedications, you, you think you'd be able to get site, like, a site, and maybe get an extra code, or, you know what I mean, so, I guess we'll talk to Ken Succi about that then. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you all, and we'll be back, um, to, to share more about this, about this, this project, um, I have a, if anyone, if anyone wants us to be like super involved, um, you know, certainly fill out the survey and just put it in there, hey, please include me on the email list, or the notification list, if not, if you don't want to, I can always take your, your content.
We actually see season, right, I think we're on, I think we're on.
Yeah, you are, and, um, I'll, I'll, I can probably say twenty, thirty more minutes, so if you fill out a paper survey, and want to hand it to me, the next twenty, thirty minutes, I'll, I'll take it, if not, you can do it online.
Is there anyone that, uh, that you can, that you can, that you can ask for?
This summer, next two, next two, three months, you know, we're, we're kind of on the introductory tour right now, talking to all the different town councils, so that maybe you'll be open for it.
We'll just say when we close down our website, we'll say Friday, go by August thirty-one, and tell them.
That, that's perfect.
I do have a question on, now, public works, it may be a different entity, we're supposed to get the stop signs with the lights on them, and they were gonna change up a little bit at, uh, Sierra and, uh, Santiago. Where is all that? That's been a long time.
I hope Josie might be able to answer that.
Oh.
Hi, everybody, um, Sierra and Santiago. Right now, um, we finalized the plans, and we, um, submitted the work order. Unfortunately, I don't have a timeline yet when the work will be installed, but, um, I'll double check and get back to the town council as far as timeline. But I know we submitted a work order for it, to install the L E D stop signs at that intersection.
And it's also at Santiago and Soladad, correct?
Uh, I don't have one at Santiago and Soladad, let me follow up on that, that's not on my list.
Sure. We did talk about turning that one into a blinking one, I don't know if it was ever.
Cause that's a bad, I mean, it's on a four intersection, but it's not great.
You guys, you guys got the stop sign, which is a huge deal for us.
Yeah, yeah, and then what about the one by the school at Sierra?
They're, they're doing a stop sign at Red Rover and Sierra Highway, right? Is that right, Josie?
Yes, right now, um, we're, we submitted, uh, request for funding for that, so, um, we're still, it's still in the planning process, but the, the study recommended a multi-way, multi-way stop sign at that intersection, Sierra Highway and Red Rover Mine.
Josie, that is huge, thank you so much.
And what is the timeline on that?
Um, unfortunately, I don't have a schedule, like I said, we just submitted the request for funding, so my guess is all the funding for this fiscal year have been, um, allocated, so will, the earliest would be next fiscal year, which is July, but, um, I'm hoping, hopefully by next month, or in a month or two, I'll have time months for those.
When it.
But I'll, we'll follow up.
When it comes to the board, can you let us know, because we can write a letter to the board.
For the Sierra Highway and Red Rover Mine, it was that, the traffic regulation was actually already adopted by the board.
Oh, okay, well, excellent, okay.
So, but the flashing lights at Sierra Highway and Santiago, those are already approved, and the money's already there for that?
Yes, we're, um, yeah, we just need to basically, uh, get it scheduled for installation, we completed the plan, so that's ready to go.
Do we, do we have a estimated timeline? Is that two months, four months?
Yeah, um, I will have to follow up, unfortunately, they were not able to give me a date, uh, before the meeting, so I'll follow up and send it in at the town council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Josie, thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Yeah, and here's my question.
We, we, we can bring them next week, yes, we will. And just promise me, send me at the town council P D O, or.
Well, no, and a, and a real name, not Vanessa, click here.
Our S E D is developed.
You can talk now.
I can talk now. Beth, um, uh, so, we had, um, a, a good discussion, I thought, with Edison about, uh, what kind of transpired in January, uh, presented our, our thoughts and findings as far as we really wanted, based upon wind speed, we introduced some emotion that, uh, that the, there's significant risk of transmission lines, uh, in the community, and that those don't seem to get turned off during the pandemic, and so we were positive that one, not the other, although we, we thought made a good idea of why they're gonna turn off to LA, but it seemed that putting our community in risk was not, um, tenable. Um, so they, uh, offered to come and talk to the community again about what it is, they have this, and all the things around that, so, uh, we said we, uh, happy to, if they're happy to do that, uh, we were not going to, uh, we're all, the, you know, we intend, but the town council is not, uh, prepared to, you know, that, so that, that's something that I really came back with, it's crazy, I think, I think.
Well, they, yeah, they, they sent an email this morning, Dave Ford is a very nice man, and very, um, very genuine, and always interacting. Uh, July and August, and I had responded, and I thought that might be too long, that's just too long from now. I, I had thought they were going to be sending us some information by the end of the week.
Which I didn't want.
But we learned today, no, the information's going to be given at the meeting, at the workshop, and the purpose of the workshop is to engage the community, to, my understanding is, to engage the community and explain Edison's decision-making process.
Yes, uh, probably very simple, there's much more information than we're receiving for.
Well, I guess, so some of the things we pointed out in this meeting is that, you know, they didn't exceed the wind thresholds, and so they cut power in areas, areas that didn't exceed the wind thresholds had the power cut. The response was, well, we look at more than just wind, we look at relative humidity, and then our reply was, yeah, all of that stuff you look in, in fact, they call the F P I, like, Fire Potential Index, and it's all bundled in there, and then I said, but you were cutting, and you have a threshold for that, which by the way, change isn't active.
I was just saying.
And, and even, even when we didn't exceed the threshold, we cut power in January, and the second part of that is, once, they're not supposed to cut power ever until the threshold has exceeded, and then after it succeeded, then it's based on wind speed, so, so the, if you never exceed the wind speed, it doesn't matter what all the other stuff is, it, you cannot be cut off, and so, that, we explained that, and I'm not sure that, you know, I'm not sure that, uh, Michelle and David are, are, are in the weeds on what their engineers say they do, but I'm in the weeds with what their engineers say.
I also think they are allowed to, I mean, did I, that's a, we, we hold, have a hall, some questions, are, are genuine this?
Yes.
About why we're, uh, like, whether we're really genuine with our requests, because we love it, but we asked.
Oh, we just asked.
I mean, that was a simulation, which is a great question.
Yeah.
Um, so, you know, and, and we had questions too, of some areas that, you know, segmentation, and why that's taken so long, and that has been, you know, when we saw areas that are, that didn't shut off, you guys. So, um, so, so this is the first step, um, you know, and you'll see what they come back with, but they're already, you know, hunted, uh, the football says, move to the workshop for the.
Okay, and, yeah, and, that's great, and Jeremiah couldn't talk to him, so I was trying.
I, I.
So I was trying to, and then poor Don couldn't tend because Edison had cut us down.
Yeah, I, I.
I know, but, I, yeah, that really is our, and then they.
But so, one thing I'd like to see, uh, with Southern California, is they have more responsibility for their actions, and as, if they're going to have a community center.
Well, we brought this up, we brought up that, that there's several issues with other communities, which is, one is, that they've been rotating, and we have no way to know, so you go to one, and there's nobody there, you go to the other one, oh no, they're at the other place.
They give you a jug of water.
They give you a jug of water, which we complained, this is inadequate, we also noted that they, they handed out firewood, which, so, so, you know, which they. Have a, they, 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 well, surely you know that we weren't seeing, you should go have a firewood.
Then why would you have firewood?
They're thinking that, apparently, Jets were given out to some other organ, communities, and said, they have pot belly stove, and fire.
Fire is like fireworks, yeah.
See, this is their half-assed effort, if, if you had that, then you simply say, we have firewood, if you have pot belly stove.
Sure, sure.
All they said to me was, oh, on your way out, grab some firewood.
Where we'll work for the consultant, and then I'll use traffic crashes, probably some other, um, inputs, such as speed, volumes, land use, to help us prioritize all the railways in the animal valley for the streets that really need the highest speed, um, and attention, where we can do the most thing for our book, with traffic safety improvements. Um, examples of some of, some of them on the screen, even the top left photos, not a rural community, it could be like a road meter configuration, or I say, in this community, it might be like adding left turn pockets, or adding turn pockets, that can get out of the way. Um, when, when, um, when you need to make a turn, it could be shoulder widening, um, things like roundabouts, um, they can be polarizing, but they are an effective traffic safety measure. Um, they slow vehicles down, you know, you have to, you have to go slower to go around them, they maintain the aesthetics of a rural environment, you don't have a big traffic signal with lights and red, yellow, green, um, they have a low kind of nice profile. Um, and there are typically, we, these, um, Palmdale and Night Castle have been implemented a little more lately, um, and things like recording signs, or, or edge lines, and center line, and edge line on the strip, that would alert you when you might run off the road, so that you can correct, so, once we have the prioritized locations, and we'll work for the community, we'll, um, we'll begin to have feasibility on, on some of these, on one of these, in the animal valley. And surrounding the community center, or specifically the animal valley.
Oh, part of it.
Oh, okay, part of the animal valley?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Uh, I think sometimes it depends what map you look at, um, so, we kicked off, we're kicking this off right now, uh, we are doing, like I said, we're about to kick off the data analysis. Um, just kind of introducing it, we're visiting pretty much all the town councils, um, in the study area right now, to just kind of share about it, um, and we have, um, a feedback form and a survey for you to, um, I have a paper one, if you want to write down, um, you can answer some questions, there's also a digital one, for a Q, with a QR code, or an old-fashioned link, which you can type in and fill out, um.
Do you want us to post your call, your survey on our website, or it, it has a link, and make it so they can record?
Sure, it has, it has an old-fashioned link. But if you prefer paper and you want to fill it out tonight or, or fill it out later and take a photo and email it to us, we can do that or you can do it digitally. Whichever one's your preference.
The word more than negative posted on the website.
And I also have Spanish if anyone prefers a Spanish translation. So we'll probably be in this data analysis phase and somewhat community engagement phase. Community engagement will really go through the entire process, probably for about six months and then next to a year. And then next year we'll kick off doing some of the feasibility analysis that'll all get wrapped up in a draft plan and then eventually a final plan. So like I said, this is a survey, it's going to ask me things like, what does traffic safety mean to you? What challenges do you hope this will address? What roadways or intersections would you like to see prioritized? What are the best ways to involve the community through this? So you are, the leaders in the community, but if there are other people we should be talking to, other groups, send us, send those our way. And then if you have those questions, like you want to answer any of those, there's just a link.
Are you going to make your database available for us to look at? So people will look at, oh, I'm going to see my accident, actually edit it in this database.
That is the, we are working through that. Yeah, we are, we're, we're working through that, so.
It can be anonymized somehow.
And, I mean, we have some P I, I personally identify all information and I agree that basically we certainly want to strip.
But I think that's letting people have the chance to look up and see if there are accidents there. Because that's the only way, you know, that we're going to be, that's how I make people know that really Switters and Dins is not that bad.
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, certainly. And I, we're all for being transparent, you know, the data is already available at TENS. It's just kind of crossing the technical and internal hurdles to get our data public through the county. And you know, one thing that was great with Vision Zero is like it focused us on streets that where we saw it just three versus prior. It was my street that I lived on, you know, a cul-de-sac that used speed bumps. Not that there are safety concerns, but perhaps we shouldn't spend all our county's attention there. And we should focus on, you know, areas that we do see those history of severe crashes. There are some contact information on the screen. I know that it has my colleague Akeem's email address. There's one under at visionzero, V I S I O N, Z E R O, at P W dot LA County dot gov. That inbox is read by a couple folks, so if you need to reach us for more information on that, on this effort, we can provide it to you. We don't have a website yet. We're working to update our Vision Zero website. And so we're kind of waiting to get that update this month or next month before we can come in and, and launch a public page for this. But our website is on the screen, visionzero.la county dot com. And our email is also on the flyer as well as the survey. But I'm not sure for eighteen minutes, eighteen minutes, I'm going to answer any questions that you might have.
I have a couple, a couple of roads, about eight, seven years ago, I don't remember. Between the time we did the jet flight check around about there, potentially that's what we possibly were just thinking about at Sierra Highway and Crown Valley. But I know that was before you guys started the Vision Zero, maybe about the same time. Is that still something you're looking at or?
I would say, I would say write it down. I, 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 I know jet flight check. I don't know the history of that and why, why it could or couldn't go in.
We really appreciated his time.
Yeah.
Because it's a, it's a, it's a sensitive intersection and also under the general plan, the area plan development isn't supposed to happen in this town that would trigger the need for traffic signal. So, you know, he was trying to find ways to, you know, comply with the plan restrictions, but keep traffic safe in our calm drive.
Yeah, and you, you probably know Ken Suji.
Yes.
He took over for jet flight check and so, so he might be able to provide an update specific to that location.
And then we got far enough that we got input from the community on it. It was just something, we've mentioned it and we never, in several meetings, and no one's ever said that to a guy that feels. So it was just something that.
Yeah, and I think probably ten years ago, roundabouts were pretty innovative. You didn't see a lot of them, but now they're pretty, you see more of them at Palm Dale, Lancaster. That folks are great to see them.
So what qualifies a criteria for a roundabout to be used?
It's, as far as like the criteria, I don't know off the top of my head. I mean, it, the volume, the volume criteria are like, I don't, I don't think there's.
Is there a certain amount of volume that has to be from both streets or all four streets?
I mean, I would speculate. Don't, don't quote me. I would imagine what one would put a roundabout if you have a driveway, a driveway, if it had a side access, so.
I know the county is now going forward with two roundabouts in Emerald Valley, there's the Ninety East and West, excuse me, and Sixty West. And those are circumstances where there's a lot of traffic in the east-west direction and limited traffic in the north-south direction. And that was why a lot of residents were concerned because, you know, everybody thinks nobody stops in a roundabout, but of course you do stop in a roundabout, especially when there's a lot of traffic and you're pulling a horse trailer coming in a slow direction. So it can be pretty challenging, but I know the county's done that here, well, in, in unincorporated LA, Emerald Valley, in circumstances where there's a lot of traffic in, say, one direction and limited in the other.
I mean, it has to be a big enough intersection for emergency vehicles, like, like large, uh, hard vehicles.
Well, we understood that a roundabout at this location might affect some of the businesses around it. We can have a problem with that.
And then certainly there's a large, so you have to clarify any of those suspicious.
Yes, we, we were in the head of our.
Are you going to be in discussions with Caltrans? Because some of our traffic problems we have right now is because the freeway backs up and in the morning and especially in the evening, and they'll get off the freeway when it backs up and maintain the same speed on S and D or our country roads. And they'll lose, that's what we've seen, that's where they've lost control. Are you working it? Because that may alleviate some of our problems when they get the freeway.
We haven't brought Caltrans to the table yet. First, we, I would recommend we prioritize where we want to focus and then bring Caltrans to the table. So if there's certain off-ramps, there's certain intersections that we should work for them on, let's go to them with, hey, these are the three that we want to prioritize and work for them. Probably force our solution.
I have one other question, or two actually, but this whole, this whole thing about transparency is actually really important because you're going to prioritize projects based on that, which is the right thing to do. And, you know, in the past, we've had, you know, when surveys have been done in communities and then the county decides, oh, this place doesn't need parks, this place does need parks. And the places they said need parks have lots of parks. In the cases they say don't need parks, don't have any parks in some cases. So that's why it's really important for us to be able to see the data that you're using to rate whether our community rates high or low.
Okay.
It's just because, and we've had lots of conversations with parks and rats about this, they just, their, their, their assessment was just way off. And not based on any real data that anybody can ever see. So, and I, so that's, I'm just not trying to be difficult. It's just that we've, we've, we've been penalized in the past that it was being given low priority for things that, you know, didn't seem like it was worth it. And so that kind of gets the first thing they commented.
Yeah, do you want to see the dependencies and how, the data that was used, the surveys that were perceived and, and yeah, the data that was used to support the.
Because if we're at low priority and, and there are other places that are much higher priority, then that's fair. But if we're low priority and it doesn't look like we should be, then that's, you don't want to be.
Yeah.
And then I, the next thing.
With LA County Public Works, and I know that Public Works is a large organization, so we probably have, can be challenging even for me figuring out all the different programs and who to reach out to for various things. But I work on the county's Vision Zero initiative, which is Vision Zero is a traffic safety initiative to eliminate traffic deaths in unincorporated communities on county and short ways. We co-lead this initiative with LA County Public Works. So I think when we were developing an action plan back in twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, some folks from their team visited the town council to share a little bit about the action plan itself. Now, I'm prepared to introduce kind of a portion of the Vision Zero initiative. It's a rural, a rural road safety plan that we're developing for the Animal Valley and ish surrounding neighborhood ish communities. The goal of that plan is to use data as well as community input to identify locations where we can focus infrastructure improvements and then to do feasibility studies or to not just say, hey, this is a street that, that has so many crashes, but go a step further and say, we think a roundabout would be appropriate at this intersection. Or we think something like edge lines or wider shoulders or, I think you mentioned the direction bike, so it curves some turnouts maybe for precise to move out of the way of traffic. So that's generally what the plan intends to do. But overview of Vision Zero, it was adopted in August twenty twenty by the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors. Like I said, the zero, Vision Zero is to eliminate traffic deaths and serious injuries. That is a long-term goal, we have a big, we have a work cut out for, for us. If you don't believe it's possible, I say we have days when people aren't killed in the unincorporated communities in traffic crashes. Let's have more of those days. And that's really, our job is to save lives. As part of that work, we identify streets in the unincorporated communities that experience higher numbers of fatal and severe injury crashes. The ones near us today are probably no surprise to you, Sullivan Canyon Road, Sierra Highway. Those are the streets inactive that we see the higher rates of fatal and severe injury crashes. This rural safety plan will take us a little bit closer and further down and it'll provide us more analysis in a more rural context versus our action plan is all the unincorporated communities like Florence Flyers off in East LA. But with this, we really want to focus in on the Animal Valley and the more rural settings. So this work is funded through the Safe Streets and Roads for All program. That was a program created under the bipartisan infrastructure law that to fund safety planning across the nation. Once you have a well-thought-out plan, there's an infrastructure component in that program that you can apply for infrastructure funding. So the goal of this planning effort is like, hey, let's get some feasible improvements, some, some roundabouts and the edge lines, some shoulder widening. Let's figure out where we want to do the feasibility and then go try to get the big money to implement those improvements. Our study area, this map is also on your flyer, is in the kind of yellowish area. That's what we're focusing the plan on. We kind of took out the mountain communities, the mountain roadways because those typically weren't different strategies. And versus like the Animal Valley where we see these straight high-speed roadways that you would propose perhaps a different countermeasure than you would say in a mountain roadway. The green dots are fatal severe injury crashes. I think those are between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-two. That's the, the study period that she was when we were applying to the grant. And then a heat map just shows where, where those are concentrated. During, when we were looking at this, we noticed that there was a, in that twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two period, there was seventy-six percent, seventy-six percent increase in deaths rather than previous five year days. So certainly, you know, there's traffic safety issues are, is, is, you know, the need is out there and we need to be doing more as a county to, to rural safety, especially in Animal Valley.
So they don't just have to be fatalities, they can be severe injuries? Because studies can't go follow up on fatalities if they were alive at the scene and taken to the hospital and passed away.
Right. Can you say that? Can you, can you say that again?
So when you're saying fatalities, they actually died on scene as.
Hey, they, they could have died after. So if they come from the highway control, I think they use a thirty-day window where if they take a crash report and the person is taken to the hospital, unfortunately that person passes away a week later or two days later, they'll go supplement that report and update their report to say, hey, this person succumbed to their injuries in this crash, so it marks as a severe injury, it was actually a fatal crash. And we'll get that, we'll get that record for that, to update, to update that crash. But our goal with the initiative is to prevent fatal severe injury crashes and reduce the likelihood of those occurring. I know if someone hits your site watch a car and knocks your, or maybe hits your mailbox and knocks it down, ruins your day, but those are not always the crashes that we're really focused on. We really want to prevent those fatal severe injury numbers down. There's more serious incidents. Do that answer your crashes?
On that issue, if I can reword it, and this was in our comments, Health Department in the very beginning, right? The data that you guys use to prepare these maps, oftentimes it's the Switters data, which only captures about forty percent of the actual accidents. It's in there right there on the website. And several accidents that we've had at the freeway on France at Crown Valley Road, which is probably the worst place in our, one of the worst places in our community. We, we had a meeting with Public Works, they were helping us put together a safety routes school proposal. And, and we had a Caltrans guy come, this is a big community meeting. And, but half an hour before, a huge accident happened at that intersection. And I told you, Caltrans got to rearrange that and just to prove the point. But that traffic accident never showed up. And so there's, a few weeks earlier, one of our middle school teachers, she was almost killed in that exact same place. Because commuters come off that freeway fast and just go fast and they, it's a point McDonald's or whatever. And that accident wasn't in the Switters. So I'm very concerned. Whenever I see these maps, and we raise it every time in Public Works, and Josie can tell you this as well, and Health Department did, because I want to make sure that the data captures what we know are important intersection areas. And that would be from Crown Valley, from north of Sierra Highway down to south of Emerald Woods Road. Because there's four ramps, two on-ramps, two off-ramps, and Sierra Highway and the critical intersection for a middle school right within a hundred feet of each other.
So it's, it sounds like you have some experience in like researching some of the datasets. And there are three primary datasets, collision datasets. There's one, Public Works Traffic Collision Database. So every time a crash occurs, the C H P officer, if it's reported, we'll go to the scene and fill out what's called a C H P five-five, five form. That's the standard form that they fill out. We have an interconnection security agreement with the California Highway Patrol. We give those forms directly and we input them in our database. So if we hear the crash, if the C H P takes a form, takes a crash report on accounting maintained roadway in unincorporated community, we will get that, that traffic crash report for the unincorporated communities. Now sometimes there are locations that are shared. So freeway on-ramps are perhaps some of the roadways that, but Palm Dale or Lancaster, you know, if it's Lancaster, probably shares. So we're going to take that report. We have to rely on one of those other two datasets. That would be, and there are two, there's the statewide integrated in traffic record system or Switters. That is a statewide dataset that all the P Ds across the, the state report too, that we can email and say, hey, can we get a Switters report for this area or this street? I requested one today for Pacifico's Highway because we, the county, don't maintain Pacifico's Highway, but we're interested in crashes. And they'll provide us that report and it'll encompass those reports taken by other P Ds. And the third one that you might be interested, might be referring to that some people use for planning. We don't like to use it at Public Works because we have a collision database, is UC Berthel Transportation Injury Mapping System. And I'm sorry, this is way too in the weeds, but I don't know in the weeds because it sounds like, like you kind of in the tens.
The TENS is sixty percent.
Right. So, yeah, so, so if you look at the TENS website, the, the TENS website's injury crashes only. So there are a number of crashes that are property damage only. Like I said, someone. Like I said, someone hits a mailbox, no one is injured, or someone rear injure, there's no injuries if they report anything. That's not going to be in the TENS dataset. So the UC Berkeley TENS dataset is they take the Switters data and as a service to the public, they clean it up, they correct the geolocalization, and they make it available just sort of for the general public. So you can log into the TENS database, create your ID and say, hey, what are, what's, what a traffic crash is looking like in the dataset? Right? You can, you can get that information at your, at your
Because both those databases missed this one where, and it was a severe. We've had people come up with walkers, and this happened two years ago, I'm still recovering. And their accident is not in the database, it was right there, in the Switters or the TENS. And that's why I just really want to make sure that you're actually looking at that intersection properly and prior to that.
Okay.
And I think you're a little bit of a creep, right?
And so number one, we'll use our Public Works database, because we get the traffic crash reports from directly from the CHP and Public Works database. And then we'll use Switters and TENS to complement ours to say, hey, is there anything I know that isn't, that isn't ours and we don't need to research and investigate anymore? So I was actually talking to Josie about putting together a fact sheet that outlines all the differences between all the databases. I just haven't been able to do that. But I think it's an important question and I love talking about it. And there are a lot of quirks and nuances with each one.
Well, the CHP handles a lot of that, but the Sheriff's Department also handles a lot of accidents. We had a fatality last week, and, but it was CHP, but I know, you know, Sheriff's Department around too.
Yeah, and that's exactly right. Some of the shared relationships with the State Center, Santa Maria, Lancaster, or, you know, if, if a crash occurs and it's a hundred feet within the county jurisdiction, then the sheriff is there.
All right, so we had one home burglary, it's an unknown time, so that means that's usually when they're on vacation, not there. We had one grand theft and five vehicle burglaries. We had a total of four hundred and sixty-seven calls for service. And that brings our crime rate down for part one crimes from last year to forty-five percent and two percent on property crimes the same time as last year. The only things I want to touch bases on is obviously with fires, you've been here, be ready to go, you know, overhear any of our warnings and stuff like that and just be mindful, and if you guys see anything, call it in right away, any kind of smoke or anything like that. And for our, just I guess everyone in general, and I, and our elderly community, the VO3, VO3 AI has come out and we already have a lot of scams. So talk to your families about having a phrase or some sort of thing to, like a challenge phrase or something, whether or not something's real. Deep fakes are going to continue to be a scam, it's an easy thing, anyone can do it. I tried to post some stuff on Facebook, but Facebook wouldn't let me do it because of the copyright stuff. But, but it's, it's very, it's, it's light years from what it was last year, it's only going to get better. So we're going to continue seeing these scams, because people are already falling for them. So that's just something to keep in mind and talk to your kids about it, and talk amongst yourselves, talk to your parents and everything like that, because we get a lot of those financial scams on the elderly population inactive and stuff, where they fall for video through voice calls that sound like grandkids and a hundred percent it's not them. So make sure you guys have those challenge phrases and stuff like that. That's got to be for me.
Five car burglaries, what would you send them by the way? Were they related to each other or just like all the same?
I had to dig a little bit closer, but I know a few of those were domestic violence, so, you know, those, you know, you go, I know at least three of those were domestic violence, because I arrested two of those people and it was at the other call. So it's just one of those things where it just happens, you know? Those are all part one crimes.
Oh, I thought you said there were five vehicle burglaries. I
Oh yeah, there's five vehicle burglaries as well. I didn't see if they were, that's pretty on par though. April, we had one, March, we had six, February had two, January, we had three. The cars, two of the cars were at the same location, I know that. So really it's four incidences at least.
Wow, okay.
That's, that's pretty average. It's not, that's not a, that's not a crazy amount.
I don't know if you can tell us, but are they, did, did they, is it a, I don't know what I'm trying to say, like a domestic violence issue where like he took her car, he left? I mean, is it, or are they just randomly stolen vehicles, where they don't kill the victims?
On, there, no, okay, so there were five part one crimes, which are like someone hit somebody, and then there was also five vehicle deaths completely not related to each other. Does that make, does that make sense?
Yes, I just didn't know somebody took somebody else's vehicle and they knew them.
No, no, nothing like that.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so I'm looking at them right now, they're, yeah, they're, they're, they're all domestic violence.
Different homes, different homes, at the same one each time.
Yeah. And then the, and then the grand theft autos, there was only three incidents. The two that I told you, one was a one car, and then the last incident that I was not there at was also two cars.
At the same one?
So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
More?
Now?
Right, are you sure?
I mean, no, wait, you know.
I have a presentation, so.
Yeah, if you, see if you can share.
Share screen.
Big, big, most activity in the Antelope Valley office of two hundred bar is related to homelessness and illegal dumping, and also recently trying to keep the county from doing things that are otherwise in the Antelope Valley. And yeah, so I think that's it. I also discovered that if I say things at town council meetings, they get quoted by news organizations. Anyway, so if you guys do have any problems with graffiti that isn't getting cleaned up, that you report, you're free to call me and I will contact Adrian, who gets the crew out pretty fast when we ask them. Sometimes I think the crew is lost and cannot locate the location. And I've also discovered that if people who rely on their iPhone are in rural Antelope Valley areas, the iPhone access it gives you can be a mile off from what the true location is for that. Anybody with, any graffiti reports, be free to call, you're free, they're free to call me, you know, I'll get it turned in. And they usually get cleaned up in about two days. We do have one location that I think in Quartz Hill, that I think I've sent them back to three times the last two weeks because the, somebody keeps repaying the graffiti when it gets painted over.
That's what was happening under Red Rover, it's like they give them a fresh canvas by painting it all, and then they come back and they were doing it again. But they were always so good about, like I said, you know, you call them or report through the app one day, the next day it was gone. And now, I mean, we worked at it for ten days to get that stuff cleaned up.
Is it still there?
No, it's finally gone.
Okay.
But it's
That was, that was over Forty Second and Avenue L every day that we perhaps, so.
Yeah. Because I always put, I mean, I tag my location and I make sure it's in the right spot, but I always put in the directions like exactly where it is.
Where it is, yeah.
And I'll take pictures if there's a mile marker, I mean, I try and do the best I can to show it exactly where it is, but we've never had a problem until recently.
No, 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 I went a couple of days in the last of the Forty Second West repaying, so maybe somebody was sick or something, I don't know.
Could be, it could be.
What, what went wrong with what happened out of Little Rock and the concrete
Public Works thought would be a good idea to save $4,000 or so by using this stuff that Army Corps Engineers said was perfectly safe and clean and good.
Well, so it can be reused?
Yes.
So it wasn't being disposed?
No, 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 they were stuck, it was ground up concrete. So after they tore down all the houses, the slabs were there, they dug them up, they took, and I'm going to quote it on this, so it doesn't matter, I'll say it. They took them over to the Altina Golf Course, I guess they, I don't know, cleaned themselves up. Army Corps Engineers ground them up into either gravel or sand-sized particles and told Public Works, you can use this. And Public Works says, oh, this is road base. And they could, we're going to use it to, to work on the road shoulders in Little Rock and Lake LA, those places where a lot of the shoulders are down this far off the asphalt, and if you slide over, you'll, you'll pop your tire. So they're, but it was a lot, and I think they said it was going to cover about two acres. So it was ten acres they cleared, they didn't take down the josh of trees, they were smart enough not to bother the josh of trees, they graded around those. But the neighbors found out about it and told us, and it actually took me like a day to figure out what was going on. And we said, no, 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 don't, don't, don't do this. So they agreed not to do it. They're out there watering it, they're promising to water enough to keep the dust down, and they're going to keep watering until desert vegetation grows back. I suggested hydroseeding, I think that might be a problem, because we wouldn't want them to hydroseed with something that's not native, and then we'd end up with some weird foreign vegetation there, but they're out there watering it now. And they're, they're making some flyers to give to the neighbors who live around there, let them know that they've stopped, they've stopped any plans to use it for anything else, that they're going to keep watering it, there's phone numbers for them to call, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day when the dust is blowing.
But there, I mean, it could have been stored in a place, just not that place.
Yes, yes, it could have been stored in a place.
I have a problem with them recycling, obviously recycling is important.
Yes, yes, that is exactly it, yes, yes. If they would have stored it out in the Lake Los Angeles Road Yard, I don't know anybody would blink an eye. But, but you know, some people in Los Angeles don't understand that we don't see vacant land out here, we see desert vegetation, and there's houses across the street from it, there's houses just up the road from.
I mean, it's possibly with some of the quarries, where they've already mined out an area where they
Well, so that would be somebody else's property, we'd have to use, this was county property, flood control. Now the neighbors thought it was a nature preserve, I said, no, no. It seemed, I think it was something flood control acquired in the nineties, like maybe it was going to be a retention basin. And so while we're, I'm trying to figure out what is going on over there, that's the first one I thought was going to be happening. I thought they were finally getting around to digging the retention basin there, but no, it wasn't. They were going to store this ground up concrete stuff.
Well, I'm sorry if I misquoted anything you said, I tried to reflect
Yeah, so it's ten acres, not fifteen, but it does fall under, if it's, if it's more than five acres, it's under eighty air quality management district. We told this, we have to keep the dust down.
You can do a desert control plan.
Fish and Wildlife Service got called and they went out and inspected it. I told them that I got a satellite photo from 2024, and I figured out where the josh of trees are, and as near as I could tell, all the josh of trees that were there in 2024 were still there, you know, the day before when I gone out to check on it.
And I don't think it was a desert tortoise area or a mahogany ground squirrel area.
I don't think so, but somebody had a tortoise in their yard afterwards, and I said, I don't think that looks like a desert tortoise to me, but I don't know. It would have had to walk about a quarter mile from the disturbed area, so I, I, but it was, it was just like everything else in the Antelope Valley. It's a place where people walk their dogs or something like that. And the quail live there, and I'm just glad they didn't knock down josh of trees.
I know, same, check last year, county biologist.
Yeah, that's, that's it, yeah.
Yes, check last year, the official county
So, so that's
And turtle identified.
Yeah, I, I have dysphocies about how accurate I am and I'm identifying turtles. I don't know, that doesn't look like a desert tortoise. But anyway, so that's, hopefully that's calmed down, they are watering it, hopefully we'll get some vegetation back soon. But it's just been so windy. That first day they're out there, you know, uprooting everything, man, there's just dust blowing everything, so all the neighbors just came unglued. That's, that's what happened in the Antelope Valley. So I say that it's an example of, of the US Constitution, working citizens, petitioned the government for redress of grievances. The government agreed with them, once it figured out what was happening, and the government stopped what it was doing, so.
You asked me to
Let's see, oh, so, and we hope to have a, we hope to have a renewal of the landfill vouchers that the Illegal Dumping Task Force gives out for another year. See if Quincy's on here for Waste Management, she's not on it. I was hoping that we could expand how many tons each household was allowed to get rid of it, we pay for houses, but Waste Management raised their dumping fees, I think some more than thirty percent this year, so.
You're kidding.
No, I'm not kidding. So I, I got a commercial sheet, and now I'm looking for, maybe the residential sheet is less than that, but our bills seem to have gone up this year from the vouchers that we pay for, so.
What is the CUP on that?
There's no, there's no limit on the fees, we didn't try to limit.
No, 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 the CUP, when does it expire on that?
Oh, it's only on Lancaster landfill, not on Palmdale landfill. And I couldn't tell you, I couldn't even tell you what year it was created, but it's got to have a number of years still left. I won't look, but I can
I was just curious.
Yeah. And I can't even blame them, because there's changes in state laws all over the place. Our landfills are not oozing noxious odors like other landfills in the fifth district or another landfill in the fifth district. So, I don't know, it's, but it's, it's one of the reasons for why there's commercial waste going up in the, in the Antelope Valley, is because it's expensive to dump.
Well, speaking of that, I saw in a recent board meeting, board action, that LA County Board of Supervisors authorized a waste policy contract with Athens. And one of the things, I haven't had a chance to do it, but I need to get that
I think they've been a long time contracted for us, I think they
Yeah, well, this is a whole new contract for another seven years.
So someplace down in San Gabriel Valley or Carson or someplace?
Somewhere LA County Board for unincorporated homeless, I think.
Oh, homeless, okay.
I can't remember.
That would exist.
Just don't recall me, it's all, but I, I want to see what the county has in terms of
Restrictions of where they're getting rid of their stuff?
Not just, you know, you can tell somebody till the cows come home, you can't put it here or here, and unless you enforce that, it's meaningless. So what I'm going to look for is teeth in the contract, like, does the county require receipts? Is there cradle grave tracking? Do they, because that's the kind of stuff we're looking for in our franchise. So anyway, I just wanted to let you know that.
Okay, if I can find it, if it's someplace like
I'm assuming it's going to be in the board action, I just haven't had, it was only a few weeks ago, I haven't had a chance to pull it down, but I just want to let you be a heads up on that, so.
Okay. All right. Deputy Martinez? Deputy Martinez, can you hear us? All right, if you can hear us, but you can't unmute or something, we will come back to you when we can.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, yeah, we can. Do you really watch these videos? Yeah, we can hear you now.
Yes, you can hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so I had to switch the mic apparently to the laptop. All right, so for the month of May, we had five, actually the biggest we've had all year.
This week is the water plan resiliency summit pertaining to the water plan. The county is urging cities, agencies, and organizations to adopt their water plan. The agenda has not been set, but two state officials, although that's all changed, I will mark that from this afternoon, and we know it's a different course people. But anyway, I have registered for that on behalf of the town council, is in Alhambra, eight thirty to eleven or something on June sixteenth. And we know they also made it, you're registered, we can go. The county fire department has issued its monthly newsletter, this month's address is fireworks safety, so please review it on our website. The fourteen freeway southbound on-ramp from east to Palmdale Boulevard will be closed from June second at nine AM to June ninth at nine AM, so the whole week is shut. So the whole week is shut. On June 7th, from 9:00 to 11:30, there will be a walking with eight way event in the Aggie Park, which is a fundraiser for Pitt Hopkins awareness. Please wear blue and join in. Also, I wanted to make sure that I want to announce this because we're very grateful to Supervisor Barber for making this happen. She has waived or is paying for the fees that the park is going to charge for the event. Is that right? So thank you very much to Supervisor Barber. Chuck, do you would like to pay that to her?
What is the date again?
June 7th, next Saturday is 9:00, 9:00, 9:00 o'clock? 9:00, 9:11:30, yeah. Also, on June 7th, the owner valley is celebrating its cherry festival. Specific information about times, he's not available. He usually runs until about 3:00 o'clock. We, we have posted a flyer receipt on the website, but it doesn't have times, but anyway, so that's another event that we have to have to be walking with eight days. On June 15th, Elizabeth Lake is hosting a Father's Day car show at Salt Lake Tavern beginning at 9:00 a.m. Entrance is free. There will be band in the vendor row. We have a poster on our website. June 21, there will be a Jueteek celebration in Jackie Robinson Park from 10:00 to 6:00. There'll be music activities like Paint and Sip, which sounds really good to me. Songs involve wine, food, vendors, tournaments, and other events. Please see the flyer. And finally, don't forget the 4th of July parade here in Acton. Community Club is putting together the parade. If you're interested in participating, applications can be downloaded or picked up at the Ace Hardware Store, the Pizza Place, Perkins' Print Shop, and Keller Williams. The applications are due June 30th. I think that's it. Did I listen?
The town council, the Grand Line.
Oh, that's true. We did. Yes, exactly.
At your people.
And thank you.
Yeah. All right. So next up, we're going to have our library.
Hello. Just some upcoming programs. The first one I'm going to add is going to be this Saturday, June 7th, 2:00 p.m. The Friends of the Library are hosting an author event. They're having Loretta White sites come by and we'll talk and get examples from her about the new rights stuff. That'll be right here in this room.
Did you register for that?
Nope, just come on in.
Wait, that's on Saturday. Is there anything else?
Yeah, movie day.
But you should come here.
Their condition is cool.
It's near finishing?
It's cool, it's free.
What time is it?
2:00.
But it's from a fundraiser.
It's a quarter.
I know. It's not a fundraiser. Well, why today is it going to be over 11:30?
It could be a fundraiser because it's put on by the Friends.
Oh, that's true.
So it's show your satisfaction with the Friends by fundraising.
After we walk for eight.
Yes, yes. See, we can make this work. Some other things going on. I've got a program called The Super Science Super Show, Tuesday, June 10th at 4:30. And I said it would be a fun real science show for kids. Next one I'm going to mention, this is about my popular band from last year. I have, I'm having sushi for beginners. I'm having a sushi guy come out. He's going to be here Saturday, June 28th at 2:00 p.m. It's really great. It shows you real basic steps to make real basic sushi, and at the end of it, you can get to sample it.
Do you have to register for that?
Nope, just come on in. I try very hard to have programs to register for. Something's in that. Bring your chopsticks. Just your fingers. But I use chopsticks, it can take way too long. So those are just some of the programs I've got going on. The other thing, today marks the beginning of the summer discovery program. Add it's over, you read books, you log them, and you can come back to the library, patch in your players, and get prizes for reading. That started today. It is for all ages, kids up to adults. So come on, sign up. You can sign up here online, just here in person, or online at the website. And then the last thing I'll mention is holiday closures. We will be closed on June 19th or June 18th.
19th, when?
I'm sorry?
Are you sure?
June 19th.
Just the one day?
Just the one day, correct. So unless you guys got questions for me, that's, that's what I have.
All right, representative, so let me have. I don't notice anybody here from any of our offices. Shannon, okay? Shannon Thomas. Okay, so one for Shannon and Thomas.
Sure, we can hear you, okay?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Awesome. Hi, everyone. Sorry I couldn't be here in person today. I had a conflict. Thank you for plugging the Congressional App Challenge. Let me know if anyone wants the PDF to sign up. I can add my email to the chat and send it that way, but if I can add the PDF to the chat as well, I can do that. The competition is open, all received. You have applications, which is wonderful. The QR code should definitely work. I know they can be a little bit tricky, but if for some reason you're having trouble, you can just go to congressionalappchallenge.us. A couple other updates. Definitely looking forward to meeting with the council. Happy to meet at the Santa Clarita office over Zoom. We can also meet in our Palmdale office, but the district director, Marie, and I are based in Santa Clarita, but we're happy to meet wherever is convenient for you, so just send some times, and we can make that work. A couple other things. Yesterday, the congressman hosted the service academy send-off for appointees to the military academies, which was great. We had a really great turnout. We had regular General Douglas P. Wickham from Ennis Air Force Base, had a lot of the appointees and their families, so we'll be releasing a little bit of information about that relatively soon. And then one of the major legislative pushes this month that the congressman has been involved with while he's been in DC is on the.
If you can hear us.
There we go. Okay, I think we're good. He joined Representative Damon to introduce the Building Resiliency and Understanding of Shrublands to Halt Fires Act, which, yes, the acronym is the Brush Fires Act. It's a bipartisan bill aimed at addressing the growing threat of wildfires in a shrubland ecosystem across the western United States. I know that's really top of mind for all of us because the last week or so has been very warm. The temperatures really shot up. So the act directs the US Forest Service in coordination with a lot of federal agencies to study the effectiveness of wildfire mitigation practices in shrubland ecosystems. The study will also assess fuel treatment strategies in basic, in basic species control, ignition prevention, local partnerships, and a lot more. So the USFAS will then report back to Congress with its findings and recommendations to federal line, federal actions with ecosystem-specific best practices. So we should have another update about that in a month or so, so we'll make sure to loop back around. But if anyone needs anything, feel free to let me know. Like I said, I'll drop my email in the chat. If anyone likes, would like any help with any federal agencies, as always, we're here for you. So don't be afraid to give us a call. If you have any thoughts, I also have a, you know, you're always welcome to, to call our office and let us know what's, what's on your mind and what you would like to see in Congress. So we're here for you guys.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Of course.
All right, Thomas.
Hey, everybody. I would have loved to be there with you guys today, but I am at an event right now and just got to wait for a minute. We are in the middle of House of Origins Week, which means all of the bills in the Senate will be going down to the Assembly next week, or the week after, depending on how budget meetings go next week, vice versa for the Assembly coming up to the Senate. So I have a couple of quick updates on some of our bills. SB 17 was held, which is our no tax on tips bill, that we were joint authors with Senator Cho Boog and Senator Grove. Unfortunately, that one was held in the appropriations committee. SB 23, which is the Homes for Heroes Act, which aims to exempt the primary residents of 100% disabled veterans from property taxes. We merged that bill with SB 296, which is a pretty much identical bill with a couple more broader provisions. So we were able to sign on as a joint author of that bill. So hopefully, that one will get through the House of Origins deadline. As you guys know, SB 252, our sequel undergrounding of power lines bill, was pushed until next year. We're hoping to get more support from some of other senators and assembly members and get that passed through committee next year. Other than that, those are the big updates I have right now after this week. So for next month, there'll be a lot more of a comprehensive list that we'll have available with all of our bills and seeing what actually gets through and what doesn't. So do I have any questions on any of those or House of Origins or any comments?
Is it, is it too late now to introduce any new bills? So is the window closed for that?
Yes, it is, but we are accepting suggestions for next year as well as the year after, just depending on what we have. But I will go ahead and put my email, I can put my email in the chat as well as, a lot of you guys have my card or email already. And you guys could reach out to me or give our office a call and ask for me. I'm happy to talk. I'm our primary policy person for the district now, so I'll be taking all of our policy meetings and bill ideas and suggestions in the district.
All right. Thank you very much.
Of course, thank you, guys.
You got one question?
Who was he representing? Oh, Valerius, okay. I never heard that. Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Of course, thank you guys for having me.
Chuck.
Okay, yeah, you have to, okay. All right, well, I'm going, I'm just, I'm going to ask Katie to send us a flyer so we can post on our website so people can register for it. This is just, otherwise, people have to contact us, and then we'll email them the link for registration. That's just not capable to do things, so. Okay, now, also, got an announcement that the Rural Water Supply Reliability Program, Phase Two, is up and running. It can reimburse residents in active and obduracy for all water costs. Also, there are also opportunities to receive a free water storage tank to have extra water on hand, which is always good for those PSPS events, so we can push our targets. That's nice. And this is probably the most valuable thing of all. They, you can sign up to have a free professional well assessment done to determine what is needed to improve it, an underperforming, underperforming well. Sometimes, you know, wells fail, I mean, even if, even if you need to replace your screen, you know, having, having a screen that's failing makes your well yield much, reduces your well yield significantly. But, so a lot of people think, oh, I need new well, and in reality, they just need some maintenance, like a screen makeover, which isn't cheap, but it's a heck of a lot cheaper than drilling a whole new well. So if you're having trouble with your well, well, oh, wells, this, this program, you can contact them, and they can send a professional to assess your well for you. And I have a whole list of things to post on our website and email to you after I finish this. The state recently changed the ADU laws, and now you can have three septic dwelling units on your property.
Wow.
As long as you have a septic system.
It isn't working.
Or, or, or under a minimum of five acres. Three.
Does that also include RBS?
No, they have, the state is, I'm sure that it's been talked about a lot, but as of this moment, neither the state nor the county consider an R B to be dwelling unit. However, that question was asked during the housing board's update package a few years ago, and we didn't plan to respond to it, and we worked out. Well, we haven't, we haven't ruled it out, but as of this moment, RBS are not considered dwelling units. I was for something different. I was told by code enforcement, Daniel Leiter, that under the emergency housing ordinance that they are allowing one R B on a property with one occupant. That's true. The, under the interim and supportive housing ordinance, which was one of the ordinances among the five housing ordinance update package, they do allow you to hook up an R B, but they don't consider an R B dwelling. That's an actual term.
So they can ruin it's inefficient to R B.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Oh, you can have a R B with your three ADUs and your regular house.
With one person in the lower home, like, or whatever.
Yeah, no, but they told us that when we, when we went through the issue, when we all participated in those hearings during COVID, they never said it was one person. You can have like a whole bunch of people.
I thought I read one.
But maybe I'm wrong, but I thought I remembered. Well, they never told us that. Maybe that's what they said.
I could be wrong, too.
Is there a maximum square footage for an ADU?
Yes. If you're in a very high fire hazard area and only have one, and your route, and your access route is not, you don't have two access routes that are improved to county standards, that the limit is 800 foot on the ADU. Then you can have, that's a detached ADU. You can also have an attached ADU and a JDU, which is a junior ADU. And I don't know that there are limits on that, but the detached, well, the JDU has to be within your house, so it can't, you know, it's within your house with a footprint. And attached is like another, I don't know.
So you could turn your garage into an ADU? Because it's part of your footprint of your house?
Yes. That would be a JDU.
Right.
And then you can build an attachment to your house for an attached ADU.
Oh, okay.
And then you can have a separate detached ADU.
Anything you need to use a truck. If there's going to change the Airbnb rule.
I don't know what's going on with that regulation. They, 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 they put it before the board supervisors, and they told us that they were going to come back to us when they reached a planning change in zoning code. And then a few weeks later, it was already scheduled for a planning commission, and never even came back to us. All right.
Yeah, because they put in three ADUs, don't want to make money out of this whole kind of discipline.
As of the last time, the Airbnb, what do you call it, short-term rental thing came out, you weren't supposed to be able to use an ADU. So if you believe they're going to enforce that, then you're good, I guess. Okay, if residents reporting graffiti removal are having difficulty using the Works app on, for public works, or are they, they are experiencing delays with the removal of graffiti, they can call Adrian Casillas, graffiti contract manager, monitor, excuse me, and I have the phone number. You can also report the problem, you can online, using the online link. I don't have a flyer on this, so if you need that information, please contact the town council, and we'll send it to you. And let's see, in early May, Public Works began clearing a 15-acre county-owned parcel in Little Rock, CSD, to store ground-up concrete from homes destroyed in Eaton Fire. According to Public Health, the site is not permitted to receive construction waste. In Zone 8-2, some neither storage nor disposal of concrete construction waste is permitted on the site. They also brought scrapers and other heavy equipment in and just bulldozed the place without any dust control or dust prevention measures, tore down Joshua trees and vegetation. I raised this, I read this up because if Public Works only comply with basic waste disposal and waste storage and air quality requirements, what hope do we have if something illegal happens and we're doing the exact same thing? Unforedible.
Can you go back to the graffiti lady, Adrian?
Adrian Casillas.
Can you, can you have the phone number?
Yes, 626. 4919.
Your name's Adrian?
Yeah, Adrian, A-D-R-I-N. I don't know if that's a B or a C. Casillas, C-A-S-I-L-L-A-S.
Because we have been having a lot of issues getting graffiti cleaned up and a lot that's under the Red Rover, um, of a house. And we've tagged it, there's been three of us one morning that tagged exactly the same thing and sent it in, and you get a report from them, and they'll look into it. And, and then we'll get a thing saying it's been handled, and it's still there.
Oh, really?
Yeah, like, it's been, it's been taken care of, and we're like, we know it hasn't.
Well, I know that, I know that the counties, and I know Supervisor Barber wants to really be on there, and she's, I believe she's very, very much concerned about that, so I think.
Well, up until about two months ago, we called one day, it was gone the next day.
Oh, so something's happened.
Something huge has changed because, I mean, there'd be some random bridge up Angeles Forest Highway, we'd call them and say, on the inside of it, you know, you can't see Forest Highway, we'd call them and say, on the inside of it, you know, you can't see it from the road, they had cleaned up.
Wow.
And now we can't get it cleaned up in front of the high school.
Oh, yeah, that's bad. So it must have happened.
Oh, I used the app and I, I, there's also a number where they say, oh, it's been all cleaned up. If you have something wrong, just call us. And I'm like, hello.
Yeah, there's been chairs and other stuff for...
We're gonna get that tomorrow.
Yes, but, like, I reported that nine, four times now. It's like, it's saving.
There's a chair, we got the chair like two weeks ago.
Oh, they, no, no, no. This is, this is right at Shannon, uh, Shannon.
Oh, okay, because at Red Rover, it is a new dumping spot.
Oh, yeah, no, right, right at Shannon, the, the shoulder, the white shoulder there, there's been stuff for a couple of weeks and, and...
On Sierra Highway or on?
Sierra Highway.
Right before Shannonville?
Yeah, right, if you're coming north, it's on the right side of the big turnout, it's, I think, stuck right.
Okay, we'll grab it tomorrow, because we're going to clean stuff up tomorrow, so we'll grab it.
Okay, beach buses back. Buses leave from Lancaster and Ponderland. They've already started for the season. Round-trick tickets from the Animal Valley to Santa Monica Pier are just $6. Do have to make reservations, though. Uh, I don't have a flyer, but if you have more information, contact, contact the town council and we look forward to it. Um, the acting town council submitted a letter to Supervisor Barker and the Director of Regional Planning, Amy Lodeck, on May 13 regarding a new education camp in the Solad Canyon that a private organization, uh, company tends to, uh, tends to operate on land that the county recently gave to a foster youth organization. The primary use on the property will be the education camp offering nine months per year. The secondary use is a foster youth summer camp that will operate for the other three months. Uh, we were only aware of the foster youth summer camp and did not propose that because the county graciously made provisions for Sierra Youth Sport to continue using the ball fields. Our letter pointed out that zoning code that pivots education camps and general plans not allows such uses without proof that the existing road system is adequate to evacuate all the Solad Canyon residents and visitors. He still overrules the Canyon Road and that water usage is a substantial concern. That we may all be going out at last meeting, sorry, that letter went out on May 13. We're hoping for a response. Um, Edison is hosting two workshops on wildfire safety. One is June 12 and the other is June 17. It looks like registration is required. Uh, Edison did not provide a flyer or other information, but we have the information, so if you would like more information, please contact the town council and we look forward to it. I know that we can make flyers and post them, but that will just take a lot of time from all these.
Why is that strikingly funny?
Huh?
Why is that strikingly funny?
Oh.
That they're going, they don't work on one.
No, no. The House of Representatives has launched the Congressional App Challenge, in which students from grades six to 12 can enter an app they have designed in a contest. Um, so for more information, please see the flyer that is soon to be posted on the website. Uh, and I will forward it to the school districts, too. I'm sure that the Congress staff have done that, too. The LA Philharmonic is, is expanding its $1 ticket program at the Holiday Hollywood Bowl, and there are, there are also shuttle buses available to the Bowl for transportation if you pay for the shuttle bus. Uh, but it's really convenient. Not at the Hollywood Bowl, I recommend it. It brings some nice food, and if you like wine, there's a wine, and it's really lovely. And the, the tickets are just a dollar under this program. Uh, we don't have a flyer for this program, but if you would like more information, please contact us and we look forward to it. I'm, I'm, I'm just wanting to make sure, I, I, I'm, I'm looking for it because it's not there, but we want. Post it on next door.
No, what, what I mean is like, okay, so the workshop is probably based on, it's like, it's just all of a sudden, like, you can...
And when I, and, and, you know, a lot of times it's just here, click on here, and I can't, basically click on here, it doesn't work, right? You know, it's like, when I copy a link and embed it.
Ready, begin.
I want to give this to the flag of the United States of America. And we two, three, four, where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so we're gonna start with the Indian House. This is for, uh, only?
So we're gonna keep bringing this up because we're gonna try to do everything that we can within our power to change things for the, for the towns as well as for us. Uh, we have this detox that is next door to us, and we continue to have issues weekly, uh, including the last incident where, uh, a guy from out of town, uh, took the train with his bicycle, um, ended up getting a ride to our, our street, uh, got his bike out of the, the truck, and then, and then decided to, instead of taking his bicycle to visit whoever he was going to visit at this detox house, um, and go in there, he decides he's going to take his bicycle and his backpack, who knows what he had in his backpack, and put it over into another person's property a couple of doors away. Happened to be the same house where, uh, one of the guys tried to break into their house a couple of weeks ago. Um, so that gentleman...
This is a different thing than that guy.
Different thing, but same guy.
Same guy.
Same guy.
No, 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 the same, the same resident.
Yeah, but, but, so different, different, different person.
Different drug, yeah.
Same, same, similar problem, different perpetrators, but same booking.
And so this guy, you know, he goes and looks through the property, he's starting to pick up the backpack, and all of a sudden, the guy comes from out of the house, and what are you doing with my backpack? And he's going, well, you're stashing it in my yard. Why didn't you just take it into the detox, whatever you're doing there? And they got in a big fight, and, uh, you know, Sheriff's Department was called, obviously. And, uh, so, you know, we're still getting these things, we're still getting the drive, and we spent a lot of money on security cameras, and, uh, you know, now we're noticing, you know, more activity, like the dry applies that are going on at, uh, 2:00, 2:30, 3:00, 3:30 in the morning, uh, the dropping off of the, um, aerosol cans in the back property, which is actually this property back here. Uh, you know, all kinds of stuff still going on.
Throwing them over the fence after they dispose it.
Like they're viewing it, using it to, you know, to snip it and then throwing over the, you know, the back fence. Who knows what's going back there? Um, we don't have cameras there. So it was a continuous fight for us all the time. Uh, the owners pretend like it's a business, it's a professional business, and, and, you know, it's, it's gonna be run professionally, but we've already had several instances already. You know, it's already been brought up to the Sheriff's Department.
Okay, I'm sorry, I, I, but it came this week, or Mom came and said that this is the first time he's heard about it, but I just spoke about it in our last meeting.
Yeah, I know.
Several times I have, so, we just, if, if they're saying it's not even on their radar yet, we feel like we're like deep into this and getting nowhere.
Um, and so these facilities are all licensed by the state, they have to be, otherwise they're not rehabbed, they're not. So has the, have you talked to the state, the licensing? I don't know, I, I used to know, I don't remember, since I've been used to all of this, but the licensing board?
No, we keep being told, and, and we get as well, we've been told that because there's six, less than six patients, it's considered a residence. So again, my question is, if it's a residence, then why is this not a home business and why are they not following rules? For, now, they got up to nine people during the day on that property, which clearly goes past the five in and outs that you're allowed, and that doesn't count what goes on at night.
Okay, well, when you say you're being told at this meeting that there's nothing you can do, we're not saying that. That's what the county is told about, so they're...
Yeah, I'm just saying, that's what our certification was.
They're telling you the same thing, but six is the limit, so I don't think it, nine is not okay.
No, nine cars, whether it's, who knows what it is, to be honest with you.
Um, but there's, even though it, it, it's, it's still a rehab, it's licensed by the state, that's what gives them this coverage under the zoning code. So have, have, at least, that's what we were told when this first started, oh, not your facility, but other facilities in, in town. Uh, have you, do you, have, have you looked, do you know their license number, or have you been in line yet? Oh, you have?
We can get that online.
Yeah, if, there's a, if they're not, they're supposed to be licensed by the state, that's what the county and the state told us, like, I don't know, six years ago, this issue, set up different place, location first came up. And if they're huffing and doing drugs in a rehab, they, they're gonna lose their license, because that's not what they're supposed to be doing in a rehab.
Well, they throw a bottle of alcohol over somebody, you gotta dig through their own property. And then, I don't know, that, that same property, the woman feels like somebody gave her a slider.
But I, well, what we can do is, I guess we can contact the Sheriff's Department and Regional Planning, but, and confirm what they told us, that these have to be licensed facilities, and then contact the state and license it as well.
And find out, there's gotta be some evidence, because it's interesting.
How that works?
There should be some evidence, so they have, uh, uh, they'll do some kind of inspection.
Yeah, I mean, you have to comply with your license.
Yes, so how would you do this?
Almost every place that we know of, it's literally, we're not, we're applying with licenses. So I, shall we talk to you later, or can I bring a motion? So, I don't...
Thank you.
For, for, so what, so, so what, what we're gonna do is then, because we can't, this public comment, we can't bring a motion now, but in old business, because we, this is old business for us, like, the whole issue, it's not necessarily you, we can bring a motion to, to do, to, 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 as, I mean, all we, all we have is a plan, right? And our voices, so to contact the state licensing bit. And if I'm wrong, I apologize, but that is what we were told when these things first started popping up, like, we were still leading down to the community center at that time, and so, and who knows, maybe the state's eliminated all licensing requirements. I don't know, it would look like that. And we'll do that in, in the old business. And the issues, cans are thrown out over, over the fence, alcohol.
Empty vape cartridges or aerosol.
And this is evidence that they're obviously using.
Well, yeah, the straws are still taped on them.
But they also have, they almost look like small fiber extinguishers, but then they have a long...
Yeah.
And then there's different places, because we find them all over the place. They're like cotton candy and cherry strawberry, you know, but they're like these canisters with a tip on them, and we find those all...
Well, usually we're...
Are they canned?
Are they?
No, it's, it's a, like a celebrant huffing agent.
It's flavored.
Or flavored, they breathe it, they breathe it, so they breathe it.
But from what I understand, is it like, usually it's like, you know, whipped cream can or something.
It kinda looks like that.
But it's like, so it's so...
Just for vaping.
Yeah.
I mean, just for huffing.
Yeah.
These ones behind us.
So it's not like a product to buy, it's still...
Right now, getting careful, there's no computers about it.
But they, they look like a large, uh, whipped cream can with that little spout on the, spout's bigger on the top, but they're about this big, and they have all different flavors.
It's sort of...
Hot candy seems to be, hot candy seems to be the hot ticket because there's a lot of those all over the place.
Does it have a name, like a brand name on it?
It does, and I don't know, I have to look and, and see it. I know we've taken pictures of it, we, we, when the guy was camping on Red Rover and Sierra Highway, he was the one that got in the fight with the CHP and ended up beating, you know, the CHP got an altercation, cleaned up his tent. Um, he had like seven of those canisters in his tent, and every one of them was cotton candy.
So this is how it happens.
Any, any other community announcements?
Outside of your dress?
Yeah.
All right, we're gonna go ahead and...
I'm not gonna look or talk to the computer, so.
So, any announcements, of course.
Yes, we do, sorry.
Oh, we're live.
First of all. First, I want to ask a question, my appreciation to Senator Valideris and Congressman Whitesides for connecting with us on issues of concern. Tommy McHale provided us with a fact sheet on SB 252 clarifying that, um, it only seeks sequel exemptions for project underground power lines, so it appears to just retain existing power lines, um, and that's on a long-term track. Also, um, Congressman, oh, also, she's asked when we would like to meet with the senator, if it's more convenient to meet in Santa Clarita or in the Animal Valley, at the Animal Valley office. I said we would talk about that tonight and come up with some things. Also, Congressman Whiteside's staff have said they would be happy to meet with us to discuss energy policies and issues, some of which are pretty dire at this point, that affect our community, and have asked for some dates and times to meet them, either in person in Santa Clarita or via Zoom. They've asked for the Santa Clarita meeting. I think the staff is there, so, so, um, that's, we, we need to do those two things. The California Legislature is considering, this is one of the energy things, a new bill that apparently breaks all net metering conditions. Um, it's been pushed by the utilities because they want everyone to pay for the $70 billion in transmission infrastructure, and they, that they want people to, and all their fines, yes, of course, the heat and fire and so on, and Bobcat, the single largest settlement. Anyway, um, they want, so, uh, the bill is going to end, this bill is going in completely opposite direction of what we've been pushing for, for more than 10 years. So that's one of the things that we should probably talk about. Um, also, at the federal level, they're, they're looking to abolish the 30% tax refund for distributed generation, so that's something we can bring up to the Whitesides, because that's, the more distributed generation we have, the less transmission line dependence we have. So, and that means less new transmission lines are in the community. Now, Regional Planning will be holding a meeting about the new best regulations being developed as part of the Renewable Energy Ordinance update. We don't have any real information about that, other than it's happening on June 17. We don't have, we don't have a flyer, we don't have anything, but keep that clear on your calendars, probably gonna be an evening.
You have to email? You're, you're not on the email list?
Well, I got the announcement, but the, the last announcement was like weeks ago.
Yeah, but you have to register, if you register.